Good evening, everyone. North Philly in the house? What's up, North Philly? And got some South Philly folks in here. That's what's up. We everywhere. So, I want to take a moment to thank everyone for coming out to our Budget Town Hall. For most of you, I may know, or some of you, I may not have had an opportunity to meet, I'm Council President, Kingada Johnson. I represent the 2nd Councilmatic District in the City of Philadelphia, which covers the areas of South Philly, Southwest Philadelphia, and parts of Center City. It's truly an honor and a privilege to be here this evening with your councilperson, Jeffrey J. Young. Let's give him a round of applause. Jeffrey represents the mighty 5th Councilmatic District, and he has definitely hit the ground running as the councilmember representing all of you. This is our Budget Town Hall series. We have been going all throughout the City of Philadelphia to listen to your issues, concerns, and most importantly, your recommendations as we craft our FY25 budget. Giving you an opportunity to weigh in on how we spend your tax dollars. We want to be very, very clear. We work for you, and it's not the other way around. Let me say it again. We work for you, and it is not the other way around. We had council session today. Started at 10:00, ended at 1:00. We had other meetings, and still made a commitment to come out to the community to listen to your issues and your concerns as we go through this budget process. I want to acknowledge other councilmembers who are here. Councilmember Kathy Gilmore Richardson, our Majority Leader. Can we give her a round of applause? Councilmember Miquetzi Lazada. Can we give her a round of applause? She represents the 7th Councilmatic District. And we have Councilmember Anthony Phillips, who represents the 9th Councilmatic District. I'm not a stranger to North Philly. Whole family called the Johnsons, grew up in Richard Island. So for me, it's also an opportunity to come back to a neighborhood that helped me become who I am in terms of my namesake, my lineage. And so, with this being said, we have a couple other individuals we want to acknowledge, but I want to take a moment to turn the microphone to the host of this Budget Town Hall meeting. And so, I'm turning the microphone over to Jeffrey J. Young Esquire.
Thank you, Council President. North Philly, let me hear you. Make some noise, North Philly! That's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about. As the Council President mentioned, my name is Jeffrey Young. I am your councilmember for the 5th Council District. I want to thank Council President Johnson for having the forethought to go to the community, to meet you where you are. This is our 3rd iteration of the Neighborhood Budget Town Hall. We started out in South Philly. We went uptown to MLK High School. Now we're down here in North Philadelphia. We'll be out in West Philly next week, I believe, as well. And so, we are bringing the people's budget to the people. We want to hear from you. We want to hear your thoughts, your ideas, on how we can craft this budget. And this is my first budget process, right? And so, I definitely especially want to hear from you how I can make your lives better. And that's what this process is for, to make sure that we are spending your tax dollars in a manner that makes your life better. And if we are not doing that, please tell us. That's why we're here. You have the ability to tell us whatever it is on your mind or your heart, so we can get this city in the right direction that we need to move forward to make, again, to make your life better. So, I'm not going to waste any more of your time. We're going to be here to listen. We're here to answer questions. And like I said, let's, you know, and we're open. Whatever it is on your mind or your heart, we are an open group. We don't shy away from anything. We dive in headfirst, because we want to make sure that you know that we're getting it done for you. So, thank you, Council President, again, for allowing us to have this here in North Philly.
Absolutely, and thank you for allowing me to partner with you on this very, very critically important Budget Town Hall. I want to take a moment to acknowledge, from the Register of Wills office, former Sheriff Jewel Williams. He like North Philadelphia guy. Jewel, can you stand up? Puts you on the spot. He stepped out. All things North Philadelphia. And I'm going to ask for this gentleman. Absolutely. This is your meeting.
So, I'm sorry. I failed to acknowledge my ward leaders that's in the building. So Jewel Williams is definitely one of my ward leaders, 16th Ward. We got Mr. Darnell Dean, 32nd Ward. We have Mr. Keith Harris, 28th Ward. And we got Mr. Pickens, Ward Chair, the 43rd Ward, in the building. We also have Ms. Linda, Ward Chair, the 14th Ward.
That's what's up. I want to acknowledge a gentleman who have done a superb job in making sure that we address affordable workforce housing throughout the City of Philadelphia. You know, I always try to remind folk, yeah, I have a degree from University of Pennsylvania. I also graduated from Mansfield University, right? I'm a former state rep, as well as a council president. However, grew up in public housing, MLK Housing Project in South Philadelphia, where my family grew up at, as well as Johnson family from Richard Island. And this gentleman has all, has taken living in public housing to the next level. So I just want to acknowledge Mr. Kelvin Jeremiah. Anytime we call Kelvin, he said, "What do we need to do to be supportive of your efforts to focus on affordable workforce housing in the City of Philadelphia?" And so, we're doing some things around public safety. We're doing some things in terms of just transforming the landscape for equitable housing here in the City of Philadelphia. So Kelvin, we just want to thank you for your leadership. Again, I got big shoes to fill, because the former council president, Darrell Clark, he just decided to just take over PHL and build all his houses up in North Philadelphia. So, I'm trying to get that saying, "Love Wendy," and that would pass through the city. So I already know Jeffrey got a leg up in this process already. But Kelvin, we thank you. And with that being said, you have any more announcements or anything else you want to say?
I just, again, I just want to thank you all for coming tonight, because this shows me how much you care about your community. This right here just inspires me to keep me going every day to do the things that I need to do for you all. So thank you again for showing up.
Kelvin, any remarks, anything before we start? You good? Okay, we thank you and your team. If anybody see Asia Cooney, Ms. Ethel Wise, give them a round of applause. They always advocating, fighting for the rights of tenants. Appreciate it. With that being said, we're going to turn the microphone over to Ms. Helen Lawhead, who is our Chief Financial Officer in City Council. She'll give a brief overview of what this current budget has, and then we'll open up the floor to all of you to give us your ideas, your recommendations, as we go into our budget negotiation process and craft a budget that reflects your issues and your concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. My name is Helen Lawhead. As the Council President mentioned, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for City Council. I'm going to walk us through a brief presentation, because as Council President mentioned, Councilmember Young mentioned, we really want to hear from you all. But we want to do some ground setting first of what is in this budget. So first of all, what is a city budget? So, the budget is an annual plan with a price tag for the City of Philadelphia and how they deliver services and programs to residents. And as you know, decisions around how the city decides to spend its money and resources really impacts the quality of life for residents and businesses and our visitors. A key aspect is that our Home Rule Charter requires that we have to have a balanced budget, which means that we have to have some trade-offs in what our priorities are in our budget, because we can't fund everything. And so, we really want to identify what those priorities are. As we talk about our city budget, we usually divide it into two main types of budgets. So there is our operating budget, which funds our day-to-day services, like trash collection, our payroll for our employees. And then we have our capital budget, which funds our long-term infrastructure investments, like our recreation centers, our larger vehicles, like our fire engines. And so, those are really going to be our larger purchases for our city, and we budget for that in our capital budget. Some of the highlights of this year's budget proposal, and the key word there is the proposal, so the budget isn't finalized yet. But what is proposed is a significant investment of $2 billion over the next five years, incorporating $850 million of new spending. That operating spending, again, those are those day-to-day kind of services. And then 1.4 billion in capital investments. And as we look through this budget, and I'm sure you've heard from the mayor, we're really focusing on some of those key areas, like public safety, clean and green initiatives, economic opportunity, housing, education, and core support functions. And that just really means some of those backend governmental services. And key here, the proposal keeps taxes flat, so there aren't any proposes for a tax increase or a cut in this proposal. So as we look at our operating budget, the fiscal year '25, which is for next year's budget, which will start on July 1st and go through June 30th, that budget includes $6.2 billion in revenues. So those are those taxes, our local fines and fees that make up our revenue, and $6.2 billion in expenditures. And as you can see here in the pie chart, that's broken down into these key areas. And there's a proposed investment of $143 million in new spending. The largest portion of that is going towards those clean and green initiatives. That's some of the street cleaning, our neighborhood cleaning initiatives, and those are going to be in the clean and green. As you look at our capital budget, the proposal is $6.08 billion. And again, we have a breakdown here of how that spending is broken out, with $296 million proposed for this upcoming budget and new spending. And the largest portion of that is going towards public safety, and that includes some facilities, vehicles, and other items. The second largest portion is that clean and green spending, again, for some of those initiatives. I wanted to highlight some of the larger proposed investments that are in the budget. And these are going to be over five years, so it's a longer period of time. But a large portion of that is for public safety, street paving, parks and rec facilities, the PHL Taking Care of Business Initiative for cleaning along our business corridors, $129 million in additional spending for the school district, additional money for SEPTA, and then proposed triage and wellness facilities for $100 million. We won't go through all of these, because there's a lot. But I wanted to give a sense of some of the key new investments that this proposal includes for each of those priority areas. So for clean and green initiatives, I mentioned this before, but there is a proposal to expand the PHL Taking Care of Business Initiative, $12.3 million for twice-weekly trash collection in pilot neighborhoods, additional spending and investment in some illegal dumping initiatives as well, among other items. As we look at our public safety investments, we want to highlight here some of the investments in the forensic lab for police, as well as some technology investments as well for our police department. We have some examples here of housing initiatives, and some of the increased spending there for some infrastructure for city-owned facilities, and as well as some investments to our basic systems repair program that really looks at some housing preservation. We also have our education investments. And again, that includes an additional $129 million towards our school district, or $119 million, excuse me. And finally, on this last slide here, we have examples of our investments that go towards economic opportunity for all. There is a proposal for PHL Open for Business to streamline the process for our businesses. And then for our core support initiative, some increased investments in areas like our human resources to help the city be able to staff up in some of our key positions. And then we also have a survey that you all can take as well, in addition to your public comment here. But with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the Council President.
Well, thank you, Helen. I really appreciate that. So, that's just, I know it's a high-level overview of the budget process, you know, but essentially, what it comes down to is that, you know, our budget is approximately $6.2 billion. And so, we want to hear from you on how we should, how we should spend that $6.2 billion. We do know some things, some costs are fixed. We do have liabilities that the city has to pay for continually. But there is some flexibility that we have amongst councilmembers with to negotiate with the mayor to make sure that we get the things that you all want to see in our budget. And so, we want to hear from you. But first, I want to call up Najah Smith to come in, speak to you all. Najah is the 5th District Representative on the Philadelphia Youth Commission, right? The youth is very, very important to our city's success and our city's future. So Najah is one of the youngest committee people in the city. She's a committee person in the 43rd Ward. She has been doing community work and community advocacy for North Philadelphia. And I plan to see some great things from Najah as she delivers for our youth in our city. So please, everyone, give it up for Najah Smith.
Hi, everybody. As he said, my name is Najah Smith. I'm the youngest committee person here in Philadelphia at the moment. I'm rooting to get somebody younger than me in office right now, so... Because I've been the youngest committee person for like about three, going on four years now. But outside of that, I've been working with youth through, like with Philadelphia Freedom Schools, other recreation centers around the city. And I've also been a mentee myself, which led me to also become a mentor to other young people. And I'm a big advocate for youth. I feel like in this position that we are in, in our city, with the young people, it's not often that we are heard. It's more so like, people just see what they see and have opinions. But as a youth advocate for our district, I will be here to talk, advocate, help other people understand what we're going through and what's going on to, in order to create change and bridge the gap between all of the generations here, because there is a bit, big gap between us, and that could create a lot of communities. So that's my main thing. And y'all see me around, just know that I'm rooting for the youth. And anything that you want to know, you could come to me. I'm really connected with the youth in our district, throughout the 5th District. Not only have I just grown, grown up in one part, I've also grown up from the beginning of the district all the way to Richard Island, so... I'm, I'm well-rounded with the youth, so I'm really here to make a change. And thank you.
Thank you, Najah. I appreciate that.
Can we also acknowledge Ward Leader Shan Vaughn, former councilmember? Let me, let me get there. The Honorable Shan Vaughn.
Thank you. And so with that, we're just going to call the folks who have signed up to testify, first person. Forgive me if I mispronounce your name. Carrie Kling.
Hello.
Please, can you state your name, and then begin with your testimony?
My name is Carrie Kling. So, I wanted to talk about the street safety improvement projects and the proposed, I think, cuts to Vision Zero, and how that would affect particularly people who are lower income. Because I grew up lower income, and I couldn't afford a car to get around. So when you design this streets so that the only vehicles that are getting their own dedicated space are vehicles that cost thousands of dollars a year upfront, both annually, in terms of like fueling, insurance, maintenance, then it puts lower-income people at a disadvantage in terms of both finding a job and getting to that job. But when you get dedicated infrastructure for cheap modes of transportation, like a bicycle or public transportation, then it opens up the possibilities, the economic possibilities for lower-income people. So, I just want to say that I am a big supporter of bike lanes and public transportation, because people who are lower-income should be able to get to a job safely.
Thank you for your comments. Any colleagues want to respond? Any colleagues want to respond? So I, I, I'll respond to that. So we, safety on our, I'm at, I'm the Chair of the Streets and Services Committee here in Philadelphia City Council, right? So, safety on our highways, safety on our roads, something that's very, very important to me. And as we all know, you know, bike lane infrastructure is something that will create a safety net for those who, who use bicycle as a mode of transportation. However, in this city right now, I think that we don't have a standard network of bike lanes, right? Bike lanes is a patchwork. So they put one up here, they put one up there, and it's not interconnected. And so I think if we're going to talk about bike lanes and improving the bike lane system we have in the city, we have to think holistically to make sure that it works and that it connects and it works for everyone. And so, and I understand that, you know, there, there are some misconceptions, I'll say, about certain lower-income folks who have their, in modes of transportation, right? Because in my community where I grew up, lower income in housing projects, using a bike as a way of transportation to get to our places of employment was impossible, because the place of employment was just too far away, right? And so, you have to take into consideration the people who are living in these communities when we are thinking about the type of infrastructure that needs to be placed there. And so, the infrastructure that is needed is going to be a burden to that community. Then it's not, it's something that I don't think that is a net positive that we should invest in, unless, again, it is something that is going to be for the betterment of the entire community there, right? And so, when it comes to this infrastructure, we have to think holistically, to, again, to make sure that the plan works for everyone in every community. We cannot continue to hodgepodge of place a bike lane here, place a bike lane there, where there's no connectivity. There's, and so, and that creates even more dangerous conditions and dangerous situations for folks as they're riding. Because you're riding in the lane, and then all of a sudden, it ends. And then where do you go? You have to go into traffic, right? And so, we want to make sure that the bike lane system that we implement in the city, we want to see something, we want Vision Zero to really, really be successful. Again, we have to think holistically and make sure that everything is interconnected. Before we can continue, I think the, I think is a bad policy of the bike lane patchwork that we have in the city. But we understand that there is a need for that infrastructure in certain areas of the city. But there are areas, again, where adding bike lanes would just frustrate the community, frustrate traffic, and it's not something that will create a net positive for the community as a whole. And we're going to call the, the next speaker, which is Robert Gladden. If you want to sign up, I'm sorry. If you want to sign up, there is a table outside where you can sign up to be a, a speaker. Robert Gladden? Oh, here you go, sir.
Hello, what's up, Rob?
How you doing?
First of all, I want to thank the councilmen and the committee for allowing me the opportunity to do this. My name is Robert Gladden, and I'm here representing the Sticking State Group of Narcotics Anonymous. We meet at 15th and York every Sunday morning, 10 till 12. We just celebrated 35 years of having a recovery meeting at 15th and York. Like you, I'm from South Philly, but I got clean in North Philly. I'm a recovering addict. I've been clean 27 years. You know? Our struggle is that, post-pandemic, the times for us to get inside the recreation center, we also, every Sunday morning, cook breakfast, feed anybody. The community, people from facilities, all that kind of stuff. You know, post-pandemic, our times, the times with the city recreation facilities have changed. You know, some days we're not able to get in, and some days they're late. You know, um, for years and years and years, we had access to the community center, you know, because we clean up, you know, we cut the grass. You know, last year, we put an air conditioner, and we don't ask nobody for nothing. We fully self-supporting. You know, we all know today that, you know, and I saw something about, you know, a matter of fact, I saw y'all on the news down in Kensington, you know? And we all know it's epidemic, you know? But we are the people who, when people get out of treatment and need somewhere to go, we got to meet them. You know, some people sitting here know what Narcotics Anonymous is, know what the recovery arena is. You know, um, we need help. We need help with getting better access to the facilities. Eighth and Diamond is another recreation center that they shut down, you know? And I'm just here because I'm in the business, or I've been taught to be in the business of helping people. So, um, I don't know who I sue, I talk to, or what happens.
We're going to do two things.
Yes.
One, young lady, this is Wendy on my staff. You can give her your information.
Yes.
But also, we have the Chair of Parks and Rec right here.
Okay.
Chairman Phillips.
Yes.
This isn't the first time I've heard this. And I just recently talked to the new Commissioner, Sue Slauson.
Okay.
Because somebody else approached me at another event for Cherie Streep saying the very same thing. And we called the Commissioner like right then and there. And she asked for the locations. And so, we will commit to make sure you have an audience with her.
Okay.
And this should be a part of the Kensington plan, just in general.
Yes.
Just to make sure, because when folks leave Kensington, they're going to go somewhere when they come out of the triage treatment centers looking for support. And we made a commitment during the pandemic, I do remember this very clearly, I know Kathy remembers this very clearly, we made a commitment that if you were any nonprofit organization, and you wanted to partner with the Department of Parks and Recreation, we had an open-door policy, as long as you had what your program was going to be.
Yes.
So I really would like to see like why there's some level of pushback or unorganization in terms of you getting the support that you need. So we will definitely follow up to make sure we address this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, for your comment.
And thank you. I'll, I'll come see you afterwards and get your information. Thanks a lot.
Our next speaker is going to be Julio Rodriguez.
How you doing? Hello, hello. Hi, okay, great. Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Julio Rodriguez, and I'm with the Pennsylvania Immigration Citizenship Coalition, PIC. Yesterday, I was at City Council speaking, advocating for the health centers in northeast Philly. And, and, and today, I'm here to talk about advocacy for an immigration program that's currently being funded called the Pennsylvania Unity Family Project, also known as PyFOP. And so, this program currently funds legal defense for folks that are living in Philadelphia. Last year, it assisted 169 people. One unique thing about immigrants that we don't often hear is their major contributions to the economy. They, they help shorten labor shortages by curbing inflation. They pay taxes. And I think what I, what I really want to point out is that many children's parents, unfortunately, are undocumented, but this program has so many ripple effects, keeping families together. And I think what I really want to uplift is, from our research, unfortunate people that are detained, specifically, what's most troubling is the, is the treatment of black immigrants. Black immigrants are detained three times as longer as, as other immigrants for a total of 166 days. They are also more likely to be put into solitary confinement and also face abuse for no other reason other than their skin color. And so, we really think that it's important that this program is funded, because we have seen that it has a big impact. So I really hope that City Council will, that we can count on your support to increase funding for this critical program. Thank you.
Can you repeat the name of your program again, please?
Yeah, it's called the Pennsylvania Unity Family Project, known as PyFOP. And right now, there's currently three nonprofit legal providers that are providing services, which is Nationality Center, PIRC, and HIASPA. And I'm, and I'm happy to send more information to your offices.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please do. Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Kobeta.
Can we turn the air down, if possible, someone?
I thought it was just me.
Oh, I'm good. I'm good. I got it.
Turn it off. We'll be okay for an hour.
Good evening, council members, Council President. Thank you so much. I am Amy Kobeta. I work at Children First. So I'm here tonight on behalf of Children First, but also as a Philadelphia resident. I'm a Center City resident, but spent the last few years living in East Kensington. And so, two of the issues that I'm really passionate about that we'd love to see in this budget are more Philadelphia pre-K slots. So we know that pre-K is really, really, really important. We know that affordable pre-K is very important. We're looking for 250 additional slots. We know specifically that Hispanic Philadelphians have a very hard time having access to affordable pre-K. And so, we would really love to see more of, more slots going into the budget. So thank you for your enthusiastic response to that, Council President. The other piece, referencing Slide Number 9, you talked about the $119 million, the extension of the, the proportion of the sales tax. So we would really like to see the City Council live up to Candidate Parker's pledge to move that to 3% increase of the percentage. So what's happening is... So what's happening is that we're taking more of the tax base in order to fund schools, which is great, but that's going to go towards new programming, according to this. So we would like to see more money going, because, I mean, gotta love Jalen Hurts, go Birds, but you know, we can't be relying on people to give us air conditioning units. Like, we need to put more money towards education, we can't count on the state to do it, you know, despite our, our good governor's leadership on this. So we would really like to see some stronger leadership on the city level in order to put more of that tax dollars going directly to schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments, thank you. Our next speaker is Diane Monroe.
Everyone. Diane Monroe, and I am representing the fourteenth, the Fourteenth Community Organization RCO. First of all, I'm going to say thank you for those who voted for the, that question, so the RCOs would be well represented. I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank Councilman Clark for presenting that, because it was really, it was, it's very important, very, very important. Now, my concerns are this, with your budget, I guess it's coming in with the public safety. There used to be a program called Support the Community Organization Program, SCOP. And my organization was a, not the Fourteenth, but we had a nonprofit, but we were elders at the time, and we have gotten older and older, so we no longer get involved with the young people. This program, when they started that, it was during, I do believe, during the gang war era. And that really helped to tone down the tension back there in the seventies and the eighties and the nineties. Now, my understanding is that they stopped the SCOP program. What it was, for those to understand what it was about, it was a reimbursement program wherein you have the little mom and pop community organizations that gather the children up, they did, they took it out their own pocket and to school the children, give them activities, take them on trips, and just to give them a sense of exposure, and also to teach them to love one another and to stop the violence. And it did stop a lot of that violence back then. Now, and as I say, it was reimbursement program. You had to put the money out first, and the city will reimburse you if they approve your receipts of what you showed. I hear it's, it's no longer in existence now, it was a great program. Now, my question is, is it still there? And if so, what line item is it? And is it with your public safety, since this, the violence among young people have increased tremendously? If it's not a line item, and if you talk to people who, especially the City Council, that been involved with that program for all these many years, my organization was from two thousand to two nineteen, twenty nineteen, because we became older. And we need that back, number one, we need it back. And my other question is this, pickleball, okay? That's going to be something huge, huge. Pickleball, one day, it's going to be in the Olympics. Now, my question is this, the Department of Recreation has a policy that I really don't agree with, that you cannot have a pickleball court within two-hundred feet of residents. And if you know how the recreation centers, mainly in North Philly, a house is next door to a recreation center, they could be across the street from a recreation center. So we're trying to do, get pickleball in West Poplar at the Lemon Street Playground. And we do, they said, the Department of Recreation was saying, it's too noisy.
Yeah, so Ms. Monroe, I mean, we're going to answer your questions. So I do think that, I'll answer, I'll take your second question first. With the pickleball issue, again, that is an issue where those residents, we don't, we do not want to cause any type of noise pollution for those residents that are close by. So that's why the rec department has that policy in place. We are looking for alternative sites close to your community to place a pickleball court. It's not going to be exactly where you want it, because again, that's not the location that's feasible for it. However, we are looking throughout the city to see where it is feasible, because we understand that this is a new trend, a new sport that folks are getting. But similarly, to just pickleball, but to all programs in general, right? Every single program is not going to be at every single rec center, right? So you have to take the initiative to go to those places where those activities are offered, if that's something you really want to do, because we just can't afford to put everything everywhere. But we are working on a solution to that problem, to put something that is close enough to your community that is accessible to folks that are down in this part of the community.
I, I hear what you're saying, but I did a petition. And I went to, I went to residents that's next door, and as one resident said, if I could deal with basketball all night long, what can pickleball do?
It's a totally different sound, it is totally different.
But, but what I'm saying is this, we need the exposure, and now I hear what you're saying, you're gonna look alternative, but keep this in mind, some children from one community cannot go to another community.
And we, and I fully understand that, being from North Philly, I fully understand that.
Because of the violence. So through your initiative to look, take in consideration, if we have a petition that the residents don't have a problem with pickleball being there, consider Lemon Street Playground to put pickleball there.
Thank you, we heard you.
Because we need it in our community, because our children cannot go over to East Poplar. And that's not fair to them, all children should have the opportunity. Thank you very much.
And to answer your first question regarding the, the program and the funds for, for youth and violence, I do know that last year, and City Council did place, Council President Captain from wrong, what was the amount of money that you guys placed there?
We put twenty-four million for what we call a community expansion grants program. So this is a program for community-based organizations specifically that deals with the issue of violence, and opportunity for them to apply for grants. And I think last year, they started like a million plus, up to a million plus. And so this is the first time we've ever done anything like this in the city of Philadelphia. So long as you have your paperwork straight and go about, you know, doing the business of advocating on behalf of young people, last year was twenty-four million, we're going to advocate for additional funding this year, but we do have a similar program to support community-based organizations. And also, we have activity funds as well for neighborhood, neighborhood-based organizations. That's up to like ten thou, or it's nine thousand dollars? But that's to do like block parties and other little things that you may want to do, because it's all helpful in terms of the activities. I think, like, we do Odis in the Park down in South Philly, and I know Cindy do the same thing. That's to our activity funds, and then we also support a variety of different other basketball groups, baseball groups and so forth, to keep our young people active.
Our, our next speaker is, forgive me if I say this wrong, Shereline Sawyer?
Everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone, council president and all the members. Okay, I am concerned about our recreation center. I live in, my name is Shereline Sawyer, and I live in Jefferson Manor Homes. And we weren't on the rebuild list for Dendi Recreation Center, but now we are no longer on that list, and I just wanted to know if, you know, how you go about getting back on the list? Because we are in dire need of renovations.
So that's something that we'll, I'll take a look at. I was unfamiliar with Dendi being taken off that rebuild list. I do know that the mayor now is revamping that rebuild program. It's now going to come under a new office, it's called the Decapital Projects Office. So it's no longer specifically called Rebuild. So as she's revamping that office and staffing that up, then I will have the ability to see where projects are to make sure that, you know, we get the right level of investments back into our rec centers.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker, Sam Resson.
Hello, good evening, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you all. Thank you, Council President Johnson, thank you, members of council. My name is Sam Resson, I live in Center City, in District Two of Council President Johnson. I wanted to speak tonight in support of bicyclist and pedestrian safety. So I get around town on my bicycle, that's how, that's my method of transportation. And so Councilmember Young wanted to thank you for saying you supported a integrated bicycle network. I really would love to see Philadelphia have that. But one current frustration I have is that the city currently does not allocate any funding for bicycle racks or bicycle corrals, which is forms of bicycle parking. At my gym, so I, I bike to my gym, and I was talking to the gym, the manager of the gym, because they, they were open to getting some more bicycle parking at the gym. And I actually learned that the owner bikes to the gym, so I was talking to them, because I've read the city's application for how to pursue getting a bike corral installed, which is just basically like eight little bicycle racks attached on one structure. And I was really surprised and sad that the city does not allocate any funding for, for bike racks, for bike corrals. And it's put us in a very frustrating spot, because I'm a member of my gym, and I want some better bike parking, and the, the owner, he bikes there, and he's supportive of getting some bike parking. But if we wanted to do it, it would, it would mean that the business itself has to pay for all of the costs itself, and that just seems very expensive. And like a barrier to having more safer forms of transportation. Then, so that's for the bicycle safety. The second one, for pedestrian safety, specifically with regarding to Vision Zero. Unfortunately, it's a little more a somber occasion. I wanted to say the name Jonathan Mack in remembrance, unfortunately, because unfortunately, yesterday morning, he was hit by a driver and killed in thirty, near the intersection of Thirty-third and Spruce Street in West Philly. And I'm, I'm very, very sad. And I, and I wanted to, you know, there's a, news stories come and go, but there are people behind all these, and I wanted to make sure that his name was said out loud. He was a father of two, knew his wife, Robin, and this is from the news story, knew his wife, Robin, from the sixth grade, loved and respected by many in the community. And I wanted to, you know, as sad and unfortunate as this incident was, I wanted to emphasize to the city that these types of incidents, where pedestrians are injured and killed, are preventable. There are things to do to prevent them, to make it so that everybody has a safe way to get around town. So specifically, my recommendation with regards to the budget, there's, so in the, regarding Vision Zero, the Vision Zero budget line was reduced from two-point-five million to one-point-five million. And I would really like to encourage the council to raise that, because the mayor, I really liked seeing this, the mayor Parker reconfirmed the city's commitment to Vision Zero in an executive order. So that's good, we have the vision and the leadership, but we also need to have the funding behind that. So please, raise the Vision Zero budget line back to the three million. So that is it, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comment.
First, my condolences on the loss of Mr. Mack. I wanted to mention, we talked about Vision Zero, but you also talked about the cumbersome permitting process for bike rec installations. And so actually, on April eleventh, I sent a letter to the Deputy Managing Director for Transportation and Infrastructure regarding streamlining the permitting process for the installation of bike racks, because I received some complaints. I was actually at a housewarming, and someone mentioned it to me and explained the process, that they were seeking to do an installation. And so the letter just went on April eleventh. We're looking forward to working with the administration to streamline that process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and if I may, just to clarify, it would be, would welcome attention, not just with the bike rack, but also the city treats a bike rack and a bike corral separately. As someone who's read the bike corral process, that could use some of that streamlining that you're talking about, and also, just thank you very much for sending that letter. I really do appreciate that, so thank you very much, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Muriel Taylor.
Just real quick, about a housekeeping item. Everybody have an opportunity to speak for two minutes, and then you'll hear the bell go off. So we want you to be direct with your question. And also, I was asked to make sure I clarify, any group that want to apply for, for the Activity Fund, you reach out to your district council person, and the fifth council, fifth council medic district, that would be Councilman Jeffrey Young. And then also, if you want to apply for a community expansion grant, that's to the Office of Violence Prevention, Community Expansion Grant, it's to the Office of Violence Prevention, that's support for neighborhood-based boot-on-the-ground organizations, and you can find that on our PHL Philly Gov website, Office of Violence Prevention, thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon, good evening, council people, persons. Thank you for coming to our community. However, I'd like to say to you, Council President, that it really is safe here, okay? There was no need for all the security and metal detector and all that, it's not. Trust me, we've all been around here a long time. Wait a minute, I'm speaking, I'm speaking. Coming into this facility, you would have, as you are, very safe. So there was no reason for all of this security. I, for one, I don't know about the other people in this room, I am offended, okay? When someone comes into my home, this is considered my home, my community feeling, okay? That when they come here, they're not going to be safe, okay? That is rude, and if you don't believe you're safe, you would have been safe here, you could have called Council President Darrell Clark, who just recently, maybe a month or two before he retired, came here and had a meeting with a lot of the folks that are here, and we see that he is perfectly fine, okay? That's the first thing. The second thing, I see in your budget a lot of things, and I know that these budgets, you guys...
Am I allowed to respond?
One moment, you can respond after I'm, I'm finished. We always, you guys, you do these budgets, and you say, we want to put money in this, we want to put money in that, we want to put money in this, that, and other thing. But guess what? We never see the results of that, okay? We never see the results of that. Right now, on Jefferson Street, between Broad and Tenth, that street has been torn up since before Christmas of 2023. Twelfth Street, oh, wait a minute, we talking about safety? It's safer coming in here than driving down Twelfth Street from Cecil B. Moore to Martha Street, okay? So I know, oh, we putting this money in infrastructure, and we're doing this and that. And when we, as taxpayers, homeowners, never see the results of it, never see the results of it. Also, I'd like to ask you, and when you all, I don't know if this budget is sealed, okay? This, these programs, the turnkey, okay, the turnkey program, okay? That is, was to provide housing for those. Guess what? We can't afford the houses they building. Guess what? We can't afford the houses they building under the turnkey. These same people y'all sitting up there looking at, we can't afford these homes. Three, four, five thousand, on, on, wait a minute. Thirteenth and Wallace, Council President, Councilman Young, one million dollar house, houses. Can I see a show of hands, how many people can't afford that? I'm old, I'm still working and I can't afford it, okay? Okay, then you have one here, and I mean, those of us, the working poor, we can't afford this, we see this and it's nothing but a bunch of mush, okay? You got the Restore Repair Renew Program. For someone to qualify for that program, the income limit is so low, I can't afford it. I'm working, yeah, I'm still working, I have to. But how about people who get a pension and social security, they can't afford it. Their income is too high. So let's, let's work on that, councilpeople. The Basic Systems Repair Program, the same thing. You can't make over five, five dollars a year, because if you make 550, you're not getting help from the city. Well, this money, okay, that you all are doing all this stuff for, all this money you're putting in the police and, and, and all of this stuff, guess what? Put some of this money back in these communities, because guess what? We're, I'm still paying taxes. I'm still paying taxes. And I don't know about y'all, but come January, when we do our taxes, half, three quarters of the money that we put in there, we don't get back. We don't get back. So while you all presenting this, this, this presentation, it's beautiful. I love the colors. I love it. It's beautiful, the print. Come on, stop BSing us. We're taxpayers. I've lived in this city all of my life. I've lived in North Philly all of my life. And Councilman Johnson, guess what happens when I walk the street late at night, like I do? All the same bros that y'all scared of say, oh my God, Grandma, what are you doing out here? Let me walk you home. No, baby, I'm good, okay? So hopefully, the next time that you visit West Poplar, you understand that, guess what? We will welcome you with open arms, okay?
Yes, ma'am. So I do want to clarify something, just for the record. And I say that respectfully. And so I don't know who set up security, whatever, that you're referring to. A woman named Asia Cooney is the woman I called and said, we're coming. I'm not sitting around saying, oh, I need security to go. And my family from Richard Island, so I go anywhere, but just hear me out. I go anywhere in Philadelphia and don't have to worry about security. But I understand what you're saying and we'll take in consideration everything else that you said. And that's it. I have nothing else to say, ma'am. I just want to clarify. I didn't personally get on the phone and say, oh, I'm going to North Philly, I need like a thousand cops. I called Asia Cooney from PHA and said, we're coming. Actually, we're doing a good thing coming to the neighborhood and kind of talk about the budget process, bringing government to you. And however they set it up, it's however they set it up, ma'am. But I do understand where you're coming from and I know it's safe in North Philly.
Okay, and guess what?
That's all I have, ma'am. And I, and I respect you, so I don't want to go like back and forth. But I'll take in consideration everything you say. And Darryl Clark created MPI. We don't have no, we don't have any MPI house that costs a million dollars, ma'am. Just want to say that for the record, just for information.
You're building MPI houses for a million dollars. I'm saying housing-
Oh, yes, probably so, yes, that's true.
So all of this stuff in here, that is supposed to help those of us and our families. We don't want to leave this community. We want to stay here, but we can't afford to stay here.
And our goal was to make sure people don't leave this neighborhood.
And so let me, let me address that, right? So when it comes to the MPI, right, those houses that you were referring to, I guess you want, we got to clarify, right, in this community. Those houses going for five, six, seven, a million dollars, those are market rate houses. Those are the people who are buying properties, fixing them up, and deciding to sell them at a price that they think they can get the most money for, right? Unfortunately, or fortunately to whoever, we live in capitalism, right? And that is what capitalism is. And so as a city council, what we're trying to do is put programs in place that can help calm capitalism down, right? Help, help provide house opportunities that people in the community can afford with the MPI. So let me break down MPI for you, right? So if, if you, if you purchase one of these properties, yes, the asking price is $280,000. But when you add all the subsidies in there that the city will provide, the $10,000 first-time home buyer, if you qualify for that, is another $75,000 grant that the city will offer you as well. You're buying a brand-new house, a brand-new house for $200,000. Brand-new, and listen, I, listen, the quality of this, and I'm telling you that the quality of those, those houses that are being built under this program is the same quality of those houses that cost a million dollars, because we are mandating that they do that, right? And I understand, listen, I don't, we are mandating that they do that. And so you know what rent is around here. Rent around this neighborhood for a three-bedroom house, somebody just told me, is 1,300, 1,400, 1,600, 160, right? So you get a mortgage for cheaper than that, for cheaper than that through the turnkey program. So that's what we're trying to explain to the community, so you all understand how, how the numbers work when it comes to your mortgage in these properties, right? You get a brand-new house for cheaper monthly than you do for paying rent to somebody else. That's what the MPI program does for our community.
Okay, I understand that, Jeffrey. I understand that very well. Maybe, maybe, one moment, maybe you were a little too young when they built Nehemiah, okay? When they built Nehemiah-
So that was a federal subsidy. I'm very familiar with Nehemiah home. That was built for federal subsidies. Those federal subsidies do no longer exist. They no longer there.
Okay, I don't care who built it. When those homes were marketed to people that look like me, they were low to moderate income. You all holler out, oh, it rolls off your tongue so easily, affordable housing. Yeah, we all know about affordable housing. Hell, we can't afford it, okay? We can't afford it. So all of this money, and I, and I understand where all the subsidies and all that stuff came from. Because guess what? I worked at the RDA when they took this land to build them homes. So I know all the different code words and things like that. I'm saying to you, all of you sitting, sitting up there, you need to work something out, okay? For your people to help your people, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your, your comments. I appreciate that. So when it, when it comes to housing, again, we got to realize that, and folks need to understand that costs are going up. Costs are going up and the, the help from the federal government is not here, right? They're sending money, they're sending 60 billion to Ukraine. They're not sending 60 billion to Philadelphia, right? So that's something that we really have to take into consideration. And so here in the city of Philadelphia, we're doing everything we can do that's within our powers to provide housing at a cost that folks can afford, right? It's going to cost- It, the city, so if you need a job, the city is hiring. We got 4,000 job openings. 4,000 job openings. Please apply, please apply, right? Right? So, and with that said, we're going to call Lexi, Lexi Temavong.
I'm feeling this North Philly energy, though.
I love it. I'm here for it.
Y'all bring the smoke and I love it.
I love it.
And I'm ten toes down.
Like I said, y'all, y'all keep me going. Y'all keep me wanting to do this.
What an act to follow. Good evening. My name is Lexi Temavong. I am an East Kensington resident, born and raised in Philly. I am here to talk more about where I don't want this budget going than where I do. I have a very passionate note written out here that I'm going to read. I am here to urge city council, as you have been urged time and time again, to save Chinatown and combat predatory development in our city and all of our neighborhoods. The proposed new arena is wildly unpopular with the majority of residents, for good reason. It is yet another example of a development project that will suffocate small businesses, price out residents, and harm the environment. All this simply to line the pockets of notoriously greedy and dangerous billionaires like Josh Harris, David Adelman, and David Blitzer, the men who own most of the city and who have bought up much of the housing that you're talking about. They and developers like them have monopolized our city from West Philly's UC Townhomes to Temple Stadium plans in North Philly and now in Chinatown. This is not the first time this historical neighborhood has been under attack in its 150-year-long history, and it will not be the last. But the people of Philadelphia will continue to fight until our tax dollars go towards projects that actually help Philly's residents and surrounding businesses. Projects that beautify our city, provide safe public third spaces to congregate, improve education, fix infrastructure, and prevent crime by investing in community-driven solutions like actually low-income housing. So I ask city council, will you commit to drafting a written agreement with the 76ers stating that they will not use any of our tax money to build the arena?
So I can tell you that I am someone, I am the, I was told I was the first councilmember to come out to publicly oppose the arena. I am not a supporter of that, that arena in its current form. I do not think that those developers have put enough into the community. And both communities on both sides of Marcus Street are opposed to that arena in its current form. And so until they can get the community support for that arena, I've always and still tall with Chinatown, let them folks know that I am opposed to the arena in its current form, so.
But will you draft an agreement with the 76ers planning that, saying that they will not use any of our tax dollars to build the arena?
I mean, I'm fine with that, right? I'm fine with drafting an agreement. That agreement really, you know, it would be between the city of Philadelphia and the 76ers. City council does not have the authority to sign on any of those agreements. It's not a binding agreement with the city council. But I would encourage everyone to sign off on that agreement if that agreement is to happen. I would pledge no city tax dollars. No, I wouldn't want any tax money going, whether it's city, local, or, or federal money going inside that arena. As a, as an attorney, I'll let you all know, when I was in law school, one of my dissertation papers was on public financing of stadiums. And it realized that there is no gain to a community when there is public money being placed in cities arenas. And so we have to think about things holistically. We like the shiny bells and whistles they put in front of us and with the, the low-level jobs they throw in front of us. But in the end of the day, we have to be, we have to see where this money is coming from, right? We have to see that the arena is a $2 billion real estate deal. That's what it is. And so the minute the Sixers get that arena approved, the value of the Sixers go up by $2 billion. But they want to give to the community 30 million over 30 years. Where's the equity in that? There's no equity in that whatsoever. So that's why I'm opposed to that arena in its current form.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember, councilmember.
We are going to, I'm sorry, Kathy.
I'm sorry, I just sort of, I want to say I have to go this evening, but I, I really want to congratulate you all for coming out tonight and for being as passionate about the, the, the things that go on in your community. Thank you so much. You, you are exactly what councilmembers, new councilmembers like myself need, right? We want to hear from you. We want to know what impacts you and how we can better support you and improve your quality of life. So I just wanted to say thank you and excuse myself. I have another event I need to go to in the district, but wanted to say thank you for having me this evening.
We want to also acknowledge the presence of Councilmember Rue Landau, Member-at-Large, and also Councilmember Cindy Baz from the Eighth Councilmatic District. She from North Philly, too, though.
So we're going to call up our next speaker, Andre Mears.
Thank you. My name is Andre Mears. I am a Vietnam-era veteran.
Thank you for your service.
Come to speak on behalf of our veteran community. I am Philadelphia County Commander within the American Legion. I am a service officer in the American Legion and in the DAV, Disabled American Veterans. And I work with our veterans on a daily basis on my own. This week, I was in City Hall. Home Depot had a meeting with the heads of the various posts within the city from the American Legion and all other post-military organizations. Unfortunately, I heard that we do have an office, Veterans Community Office, down 127 City Hall. For a while, that office has been very difficult to get into. You go down there, it's closed. We have a veterans' population in Philadelphia that generally the general population does not know about. And also a very large amount of, unfortunately, veterans that are homeless. I've worked with many of them. Some are homeless by choice. Others are homeless because they fell on and is falling on hard times. The word I received the other day while I was in City Hall is now the Veterans Office, Office that is located down in Room 127 has to, an appointment has to be made to have some business taken care of for the veteran. Now, that's a bad thing, because if a veteran is in need, many veterans can't wait for an appointment, other than in crisis, the suicide thing, okay? And there are times that you would also need that office almost 24/7. There are papers that are taken down there for safekeeping for the veterans. For example, the Veterans 214, those of you that don't know what the 214 is, that should be lease paper or the discharge, okay? That is registered, or supposed to be registered, in the County of Philadelphia, and that is City Hall. So if I were to go down there early in the morning, because I, I'm in town, or I just need to go down there on the spur of the moment, someone passed away, the family doesn't have the 214, but my understanding, I cannot get that 214 until I make an appointment to go and get it. I am asking the city to fund that office in order for it to be open from nine to five, okay? Or longer if needed, okay? To also, it hasn't been a director in that office for quite some time, okay? We need a director in that office and a director that is a veteran that is in the know. You can have all the, the, the civilians in there, and the civilians are good, but they are not veterans. So my thing is asking for the city to look into that particular situation. That's only one. But that's what I would like to have now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just quick, Councilman Young, just a, just a quick response. I just want to say thank you for your testimony. Honestly, this is why Council President Johnson thought of having this in our communities, because what you just shared with me, because we deal with tons of issues in the city of Philadelphia, right? And what you just shared with me was very new to my insight. So I wanted to just say thank you, and we're going to definitely follow up on your request. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you so much.
Yes, and I'll do additional follow-up with the young lady that actually runs, Ms. Wanda. She runs the department. I know we just added additional staff member. But you are correct, we are currently looking for a replacement for director. But that will be done because we have some prospects. We've already interviewed a couple individuals. I personally interviewed a couple individuals that I'm looking at. So we are in the process of getting that, getting that done. But I do want to clarify in terms of case, case management process still keeps going, just to let you know. Separate from not having a director, we have three staff members that engage in case management work. And I know we also have an event that's coming up. I'll make sure I get, get you the information, because I just had the same meeting with Home Depot.
Right, right, I was there.
With the bucket and all the information. And so we're definitely going to make sure we follow up on it. Kind of do a reset going into the summer, but thank you, though, and thank you for your service.
Council President, I, I wanted-
Council President, I wanted to mention as well, thank you very, very much for your service. I also wanted to mention the upcoming Veterans Fair, yes, that we'll be having in council. So we'll make sure that that information is disseminated. I'll ask my team member to get your information so we can share it with the President's Office. And finally, I wanted to mention, I'm happy the meeting with Home Depot occurred. I spoke with Mr. Stovall regarding Home Depot at a separate affair. And so I'm happy that that's ongoing work that continues to happen because they have helped us in support of different veterans groups previously. Lastly, I wanted to mention, because I do have to depart unfortunately to represent the city at another affair downtown. I wanted to mention that this is a proposed budget. How this process works, this is a proposed budget for fiscal year '25 that has come down from the mayor's office. This is their vision for the budget. It is now up to us in council to work through everything line by line in that proposal to ensure that it lines up with what we're hearing this evening. And so that's why this opportunity is so important, because right now we're in the proposal stage. And once we receive this feedback, this feedback is vital. And you know, I've been taking copious notes on everything that all of you have stated thus far so that we can take that into consideration as we finalize our budget process. So I just wanted to say thank you for your attendance this evening. I am very, very encouraged by what I'm seeing here and also by what I'm hearing. And we look forward to continuing in this process. Just know, we were in council chambers for nine hours straight yesterday, hearing from 100 individuals who came to provide a public testimony. So we are dedicated and committed to this process and are thankful for your participation. Thank you, Council President, Councilmember Young and colleagues.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wadiya Garding.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, City Council. I'm here to talk about food insecurity, and more importantly, I'm here to talk about the Food Policy Advisory Council. Last month at City Council, Councilman President, you made a resolution to enact the Food Insecurity Task Force or Advisory Council. You have a Food Policy Advisory Council enacted by Mayor Michael Nutter housed within the Office of Sustainability. There was no mention of that council. They weren't even invited to the meeting. You had three outside entities. You had Philabundance, the Food Trust, and SHARE, Speak About participating. And you have an entity housed within the Office of Sustainability. The Food Policy Advisory Council has been in existence since the Food Charter, since 2008, and yet those people were not asked to participate. They have the statistics, they have the information, they have been boots-on-the-ground working. You have 34 council members dealing with food insecurity in this city. 25% of Philadelphia residents are food insecure. Since 2020, our food has gone up, what, 25%? You drop $170, $200 a week just on food, and here you are creating a whole nother body when you have people working within city government already dealing with this, and no one has even reached out to them? I don't understand that. Why are you reinventing the wheel? When you have, this very council was instrumental in the 2018 Farm Bill. Many of what's been passed in the Farm Bill and the Farm Bill to come has come out of the Food Policy Advisory Council. I would recommend that you use the people in city government available and not go to outside entities, to nonprofit organizations. We talk about DEI. DEI is more than Q. It's about the expertise. We talk about the expertise within our community. You have 34 council members who are adversely affected by food insecurity. It would seem to me that those are the people you would go to first and not Philabundance. Granted, they're the, you know, Southeastern Pennsylvania, they're the largest food provider, I recognize that. But you have an entity, sir, that you have yet to reach out to that already exists. I would also ask that you put a little more money in the Office of Sustainability budget. I understand you've taken 100, well, not you personally, that the city has taken 100,000 from that very budget that could be used with the Food Policy Advisory Council so that we can help Philadelphians. The information is there and the knowledge is there. Please use what you have available to you. Thank you.
I want to say, I want to say, first of all, you're spot on. They are already on the list that we put together to be contacted, to be a part of it, so they will not be excluded. I signed off on it yesterday with my team, and so they will be invited to be at the table. They are a part of the individuals that we invited, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Ms. Edna Devlin, Ward Chair, 14th Ward. And while she comes up, I just want to give a special hello to the 20th Ward Leader, Mr. Renee McNear. Thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon. Yes, my name is Edna Devlin, and I am the Chair of the 14th Ward, as well as the Judge and a Committee Person. Councilman President Johnson, I've been with you for many years. We started over on Corinthian Avenue to this side to Richard Allen. I also dealt with you in Point Breeze in South Philly with my family down near the Shaddings. Now, I'm not gonna hold up because I do go to church and I know about the two minutes. First of all, I wanted to talk to the lady about the Board Education. I would like to thank Philadelphia Housing Authority Leader, Mr. Jeremiah, because at Ben Franklin, we have public housing students that attend Ben Franklin High School that are being trained for septic jobs and other things with the money. I want to know if with that training with Housing Authority, period, because I'm one of the subsidized renters, I didn't hear anything up there pertaining to us. Some housing authorities that did redone in this community of north-central Philadelphia where your family live across the street, they pay $1,300 liquidating gas to live here. So people that's in the surrounding area assumed because we live in subsidized housing, we might pay 100 or 200. That was in the 50s. This is not the 50s. This is 2024. So, and I also appreciate Philadelphia Housing Authority for homeowners. First-time homeowners, they get $10,000 once they go through it, and they can pick their own houses. Now, the problem I have with this budget, I didn't hear anything mentioned about the subsidized renters or housing. We're right now in a big strain with downsizing property, and then they rebuilding it in our community because you have new people in Philadelphia. And with the property taxes like it is, it's kind of high. Now, where I live at is a newly placed, but we still need money for budgeting that we get. We need more money with that. And then in employees, we're short of staff workers to do repair for Philadelphia Housing Authority because we don't have enough money to hire anybody or do it. I just want to know, when you sat there and mentioned about your budget, I didn't hear anything about people like myself that live in subsidized housing. And I would like for all of y'all to know, everybody that do live in subsidized housing don't pay 100 and some dollars no more, okay? Do you think whoever y'all talking to will be able to get hold to Philadelphia Housing Authority and find out, can somebody set at y'all table for the budget for houses?
Yes, we're gonna do it two ways, because I know Rue Landau, housing activist, she's gonna chime in as well. I'm glad you mentioned it. Now, we already have, already had a robust rental assistance program that we're gonna be advocating for in this coming budget, right? But also under MPI, right? There's a category that specifically deals with PHA. When I was going over it with my team, and that was new to me, though, to be quite frank with you, that we were providing rental assistance to individuals who do live inside PHA. That was an arrangement under the former Council President, Darrell Clark, working in partnership with Kelvin Jeremiah. So I'm glad you mentioned it, because when we were going over it, I didn't know about it before. So I actually, it was kind of new to me, because I'm like, well, how are we giving PHA rental assistance to the city budget? Which was totally new. And so there was a program before, but now that you mentioned it, it gives us even more incentive to kind of double down and take a look at it as we try to figure out ways how to fund this next cycle of the neighborhood preservation.
Yes, well, I heard, not to cut you off. I heard you keep hollering about Home Depot. Do you not know Philadelphia Housing Authority, people for pipes or anything we need for our houses for repair, that's where they have to go at now? So that means if somebody in their home having a problem, a pipe issue or whatever, wiring issue, they have to wait until they go order it and bring it to us. The other thing I wanted to say, when the lady was up here talking about Philabundance, well, thanks to the 5th Councilmatic District, for three years, Philabundance has been taking care of this community. I mean, feeding us since, you know, we don't have no food, and the state is messing with the food stamps for the poor people, and the price of 11 went up. I just thought I'd throw that in. Thanks for the 5th District Councilmember, what you just got here, Jeff. So, three years ago.
We're working to continue that program.
What?
We're working to continue that program out of this facility here. We're working to continue that.
You say you're working to take it out?
Continue, continue.
I was getting ready to say, because we'd be at City Hall protesting with our food at your door, okay? But I just thought I'd bring that up, that Philabundance had took very good care of this community for three years.
Thank you, Ms. Devlin. I appreciate your, we appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you too.
I just wanted to just add a couple of points to that. That was fantastic. So my name's Rue Landau. I used to be a lawyer at Community Legal Services many years ago. And I actually represented many tenants at Richard Allen when we went through the Hope 6 revitalization, when they took down the towers and put back some super-low-income homes, but not the rest. And it displaced a whole lot of people. And I knew then, as watching what happened at Richard Allen, and it happened down at South Wark, and it happened at MLK, and it happened at Mill Creek, and it happened throughout the city, that what we were doing is displacing low-income tenants who had a community, who had a great, strong structure, displacing folks, handing some people Section 8 vouchers, evicting other people, and sending them off with absolutely no assistance and no support. So you could see the problems as they were there. You were seeing the challenges as they were gonna happen. And we worked really hard to try to save as many people as we could here at Richard Allen and throughout the city. What has happened since then, and that's the early 2000s, is that the truth is, Councilmember Young's not wrong. We have a massive problem with the federal government. Their kind of HUD has gotten out of the business of subsidized housing. That's what they're supposed to be doing. We need their money. We need their funding. They are giving places like Philadelphia less and less money every single year. There was a national program of one-for-one replacement a long time ago. You took down 100 units, you had to put back up 100 units. They got rid of that in like 1994. Now, it's, well, let me just say, the great, so I've had a very good conversation with Kelvin Jeremiah, the head of PHA, and I'm pleasantly surprised to see that PHA is far more focused now on trying to fix some of these problems than his predecessor was. And that we are doing the best that we can now with the subsidies that we have. There are other subsidies. They just look different now, right? They come through the state, the low-income housing tax credits. Everything is so much more complicated. You have to find this funding and that funding to make a project work. But I am telling you, I, along with many of my colleagues, are dedicated to making sure we will figure out ways to keep people in their communities, especially when communities start to get developed and change. It is essential, that is not just essential for homeowners, it's essential for renters too. So we're gonna do everything we possibly can, and we're here for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Landau. Our next speaker is Tara Dantonio.
How are you? Good evening. Good evening. My name is Tara Dantonio. I was born and raised in the city. I am a weight loss management specialist, a holistic nutrition specialist. I, 15 years ago, overcame crystal meth addiction, severed my arm off my body and homelessness. This is Nicole. She's an amateur boxer. She works with the youth with boxing. And this is Curtis. Curtis, say hi, City Council. Or Miss Council. So we're here because we're representing an organization called Workout for Change that I started four years ago. We started that on the art museum steps with one conversation. I went to go during the George Floyd time period and during COVID, where I met my then-to-become church. We started holding massive workouts in the art museums. We brought bands out. We held Workout for Worship. And over the course of two years, throughout the summer, we had 40 to 50 people come out every single week. We were able to raise money for different organizations. The reason why I'm here is because in between all the coaches that I have in the organization, we're able to do boxing, self-defense, Silver Sneakers, special needs, leadership training, basketball coaches, football coaches, and high-quality personal trainers. I personally work with the disabled and also Silver Sneakers and teach both of them. I also have connections with military, churches, home care companies, and special need programs. We are coming here to you today because we also started, I wanted to, I'm glad to meet you, Kenyatta Johnson, because we actually ended up getting sponsored on the news and put on the mat through a no-gun violence event that we did, and it was really awesome. And then we also marched down Broad Street to City Hall against no-gun violence. So we're coming to you today because this all comes out of my pocket. And we're looking for a location, excuse me, where we can offer these things so our kids can have places to work, workout after school programs. But the biggest thing that I talk to kids about and teens about and adults about is we have an issue in our city of food swamps and forms of oppression through sugar. And they just released to the general public yesterday that they will be looking into banning things like Gatorade and Doritos, all things that I've been, I've been preaching for 15 years and everybody looks at me like I'm an alien. But the thing is, this is one of our biggest problems we face as a whole, in this whole community and city, because our children are developing diseases and focus issues and hyperactivity and having trouble already with the trauma that they've faced and the oppression that they've faced with regulating their emotions and being stable and being able to be leaders. And the dyes and the sugars that they're consuming are poisonous and are directly leading to the oppression of these communities. So I didn't put up a budget number just because in this iPad, I have pictures, videos, things you can't even, like huge things for you to see the workouts. But I have budgets from all the way to, if somebody could just give us a space in their own rec center, all the way up to if we could restore a warehouse or restore a rec center with basketball courts, and we could have basketball leagues and be able to offer all these different avenues. We could hold a high, we could hold, you know, a citywide search for the best coaches that work within our communities and place the best people in each position. We can also offer coaches opportunity by giving them a stable place to train their people in exchange for their time for the community. Because even good coaches suffer with being very low-paid and all the heartaches that come with just doing stuff from their heart and unstable environments like gyms and the fitness industry in general.
Thank you for that. So there is one thing that, you know, is, I'm passionate about, is making sure that our rec centers are used for recreational activities, right, and recreation space. And so I am now currently, you know, going to do an assessment of all the rec centers that are in the 5th District that have underutilized space. And so we can then start partnering with our community organizations who want to come in to use that space to provide opportunities for our young people. So that's one thing I'm looking at. Now, we want to make sure that rec centers are used for recreational activities and nothing more, because our children are out here literally killing each other. So we have to make sure that there are opportunities for them to go into a safe space. So I thank you so much. I want to make sure my staff gets your contact information so we can reach out to you.
I'm so sorry. Really quickly, just on one thing you said. So we incorporate all kinds of things from hula hoop to sidewalk chalk, like for kids, so they're really fun. So kids would actually want to come, like, kids enjoy our workout so much, it's not even funny, so.
I absolutely understand. Thank you so much.
Can I add one other thing, Councilman? I just wanted to add, can you give us, are you on social media so we can follow you?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
What's the name of your social media?
Workout for Change is the name of it.
Workout for or F-O-R?
F-O-R. It is still very small. My social media is nothing.
That's fine, just so that we can follow you. And I also wanted to encourage, I don't know if you are familiar with the Philadelphia Activities Fund?
We heard it in the beginning.
Okay, all right, so somebody mentioned it.
We want to say thank you so much for this opportunity, because as we all know, when it comes to stuff like this, you kind of get lost. And we know that there's a lot of opportunities and financial things out there that a lot of people don't hear about. And we just came here without even knowing if anybody would talk to us, so thank you so much.
Of course.
And just so everyone knows, we are cutting off the list for questions because we have, still have three sheets we gotta get through. And so, I know, very robust dialogue. robust dialogue conversation in North Philly. What do you think? So, but however, what we're going to ask is, when you come up, please respect the timer. Just ask your question, and then we're going to give you a response so everybody can get a chance to have their voices heard. Is that okay?
Because I know y'all won't be here all night either, right? We've been here for nine hours last night listening to testimony. Y'all trying to be here for nine hours? I don't know. So, with that said, we're going to call Ms. Tiffany Chavu.
Tiffany! I'll do it this way. That's better. Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Tiffany Chavu. I am here representing a variety, I think, of things. One, I am a community member. I live at 12th and Master. And so, when someone was talking about the streets on Jefferson, yes, I agree. I don't know why the street has been, you know, torn up for almost a year. When they were talking about Denby Recreation Center, I go and play tennis there. But those tennis courts don't look like the ones right here at 8th and Poplar. It's, you know, really interesting. They built up, you know, 8th and Poplar, they built this whole new condominium, and they got pickleball, and they have, you know, great new courts. But right here in the community where people that look like me, they're just raggedy, there's, you know, grass growing up in the, in the courts, and I play every day. When you talk about, you know, having things at, for out-of-school students, I have a school, I am the CEO of Somerset Academy Early Learning Center. We are located right at 719 West Girard. And that is the big ask for me right now. We currently have sixty Philly pre-K slots, and we can take so much more. I have thirty thousand square feet of space. And we are able to accompany more students if the budget allows for two hundred and fifty more Philly pre-K slots. I was at those hearings yesterday. I was there for five and a half hours waiting to speak to each and every one of you, because I know that Philly pre-K starts and it diverts people and kids from going to jail. I, I was a former probation officer. I worked with eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds who are more likely to kill or be killed. I was in these streets knocking on doors, making sure that my probationers did not die. But now I realize that it starts in pre-K. Yes, kindergarten is important, K through eight. I went to Bodine, right down the street. So, I understand what Philly pre-K and what a good quality education can provide. It can divert children that look like us into going to jail from being killed, if you guys give us more spots. I know that, you know, it's late, but we really need to help our children. We, we really do. So, please, 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 please give us more. It's two hundred and fifty slots, and we, we can do it. I can do it right down the street, 719. If you want after school, we have a Philly Beach program. Thank you, because we did get some of that money from the Office of Violence Prevention. We did get some of those grants. We did the work. And it's available for everybody. If you need some help in trying to find out money, come and see me. We will partner with you. We are all about making this community stronger and better for our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, I can't see this, Aleah Delagon? I'm sorry if I said that wrong.
I think it's mine. My handwriting is so wrong.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Yeah, my name's Aileen Callahan.
Aileen Callahan. Excuse me, Aileen Callahan.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Thank you. We're Councilmembers. I apologize.
Hey, thank you all for having me today. I'm Aileen Callahan. I live at 10th and Dolphin. And I just wanted to talk about really fast education. So, my son's here with me today. I had my son as a young mom, and he's my life, right? He's everything to me. He's my world. I remember when he was in kindergarten, his school, at the time I was in Kensington, I got evicted in 2022, Port, Richmond Elementary School in Belgrade. His classroom was shut down for a very toxic level of asbestos. He has asthma. It's going to take a long time to understand the correlation between those two things. I do know that his amazing kindergarten teacher, principal, Ms. G, she left that year. She never came back. We know that all too often, we have amazing educators lose their lives to mess with illeoma because of the conditions of the schools. So, when I see this money coming in that we have, I want to ask for us to put that money towards getting the lead, mold, asbestos mildew out of the schools for our children. For single mothers, when our children also have asthma, last night, actually, my son's nebulizer, the piece of it, a part of it, got warped. It's going to take way too long. It's actually faster for me to go to the ER and get a whole new thing and pretend like I don't know he has asthma. And that's not fair. That's not the burden I want to put on the state, but that's just the dysfunction that we have right now with the school conditions. They are actually hurting our children, right? They're hurting our educators. And so, I want to ask, you know, maybe instead of two point seven million dollars for drones, that we get rid of the asbestos mold and mildew in our schools. Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you. We had a very, very long hearing last Friday for eight individuals who will be a part of our current school board. And, but however, you know, members of council, we support this slate, but also we know we have to do better, right? And we don't even have a facilities plan right now. And so, people across city of Philadelphia, particularly parents, should be in outrage, because at the end of the day, in order for us to address the asbestos and lead that are impacting our schools, we have to have a plan. And this current board, prior board, current superintendent, we don't have a plan at the day. So, I'm going to put it out there at the end of the day, because at the, we have to have a sense of urgency. And I think a lot of teachers and principals, their kids aren't attending these schools.
Yeah.
But if you put the politicians, right, children inside these schools and the teachers' kids inside these schools and the principal kids inside these schools, I think we address this issue overnight. And so, I just want to thank you for saying that statement. We will be working very diligently and, and most importantly, making sure with this new administration, they work with a sense of urgency, because we hate getting phone calls that a school was shut down.
Yeah.
Half the school building is shut down, and that has an impact on the psyche of the kids. And so, thank you for putting that out there.
There's the R-City Our Schools Coalition. In 2016, 2017, I was lucky enough to actually mentor by Kendra Brooks herself to be a community organizer for my son's school. So, I'm sure working with the R-City Our Schools Coalition would be a great first step. It's where a lot of, honestly, like what you've seen today, it's moms coming together, making sure that our children are taken care of, and that means the whole community, too.
We would love to have your information. So, please.
Thank you so much for that, Ms. Callahan. Thank you.
Can we acknowledge the namesake of the building that we're in, State Senator Shereef Street, North Philly? Round of applause.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Harris.
Good evening, Councilman, Council President. I want to congratulate this new council we have first. You know, give them a chance, give them a chance. They, they, I mean, they, they're conscious. This is a, I mean, not the last one wasn't, but this is a younger council people. I mean, it's going to be exciting just even watching them perform. And I tell you, they, they, this is a people's council. You know, I just want to speak on education. You know, the young lady before me, she kind of mentioned some of the topics that I wanted to say about this asbestos and this, this lead in the schools. You know, we went to these schools, they can't even drink the water anymore, like in the hallways. You know what I mean? It's, it's kind of crazy. You know, we got a, the, the state, Shapiro did a wonderful job, like proposing more money in the schools, I think like a hundred seventy-two million more dollars, right? And with the federal government putting eleven percent in, and then the, the state putting thirty-six percent, the city putting fifty-four percent out of wage taxes, right? That's our tax dollars. The abatements are working against us now, right? So, so I understand why it came about. We needed some development to attract development, right? Okay. It went down from fifteen to ten years, right? So, that needs to be examined, along with the clean and green, right? We got, what's that, thirty-six million, right? So, we got a twenty-four million dollar edu, like educational arm, and it proposed in the budget, right? So, maybe five million need to come from the clean and green to the educational thing, right? And we could address these schools, like perhaps the councilmen, you know, we can revisit Fitzsimmons, that was an excellent school when I was going. You know what I mean? Do it like the Councilman Bass did with Pierce. And we need to start seeing new schools. Like, our children can go to new schools. That's incentive enough, like get them to combat some of the violence in our schools. When our children go see something new, it's exciting, it's a clean classroom, you know, it gives them more incentive, like somebody cares. And we do, we all care, right? We understand as a budget, like the young lady said, the federal government doesn't, like it's putting less money, Councilwoman Luann, who wants the federal government putting less money. That's because we're seeing the return of, this is what we're seeing, witnessing in real time, the return of white flight, right? Right? This is, this is the opposite. We're seeing this in real time, right? So, yes, the federal government putting less money in the cities, it has a racial impropriety there, right? So, it's up to our council members, our state senators, you know what I mean, to implement some stuff, right? So, as the demographics change in the city, we can make sure our people that's in these communities have something before, like, you know what I mean? You know, it can be some equality or some, some economic justice with these schools. So, perhaps we can get some lead out to schools and asbestos, because this is a big deal with the landlords, right? You can't rent, you can't rent with lead and asbestos, but they can go to the schools. So, let's address that. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Harris. Our next speaker, Matthias Marino.
Hello. I'm Matthias. I'm fifteen years old. I'm a freshman at Ball D. P. High School at Sharwood and School.
Bucks, okay.
Yeah, Bucks. First of all, I would like to say the public safety. In my school, we are a ninety-eight low-income percent. It means that my classmates and my peers suffer. And I have, I have, I have them, a moment where I believe that they have, they, some of them are in, are in shelters. They don't have guardians. It means that they don't have someone to tell them how they, how they can live. They don't, they don't know outside the borders of Philadelphia. It means that what they see in the city is what they think and what they feel is has grown. I would like to say, what programs should the city can, can give to the, to our community and to our schools to help get, motivate the students to don't lean with the guns and with the violence? When I, when I walk in the street, coming back to my home in the Sharwood and South B. Moore, I always see my, my classmates fighting in this, literally fighting in the corner. Other schools, they fighting with guns, and it is so sad to see my, my kids, because they are my, they are my kids, suffering. Yeah, that's, and how can, how can the city improve, like they involve with the teenagers and the youths with this, with, with action that the city does? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment and your questions. So, when we started the meeting off, I led the meeting with my youth commissioner, Ms. Nadja Smith, to show my commitment to the youth, to make sure that the youth know that this body of the city council cares about their issues and cares about their concerns. And we're going to make sure that in this budget process, we invest heavily in programs that can help eradicate, or at least mitigate a little bit, some of this gun violence that we're seeing in our communities. As the council president mentioned, we have the Violence Prevention Grant, so organizations that are out there. I'm committed to making sure that our rec centers have recreational activities dedicated toward the youth, so that youth have something to do other than the peer pressure that they see in their communities. So, we're going to be dedicated and committed to working, to making sure that our youth have some, some proper infrastructure in place so they can continue to stay kids for as long as possible. So, thank you so much for your question. Our next speaker, Audrey Coles.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And thank you. I embrace this new council member. I don't have enough time. So, what I did is I have a literature I would like to give you, and I'll just give you a brief introduction.
Absolutely.
I'll take it, man.
It's cool. It's cool.
It's cool, little babe.
It's cool. It's okay, too.
Let him do it. Let him do it. They made a team like we were scared.
It's okay. It's all right, man.
Take it there. All right. I'm just going to say it in the two minutes. This is based on zoning. I know you are new. I know you're new, and you inherited this. But with, between you and council, it's time for, and I'll go through you. All right. Now, first and foremost, my name is Audrey Coles, and I am, I live in the Forty-Third Ward, Twenty-Fourth Division. I am a council, I'm a committee person and a block captain and also a longtime resident of that area. Now, from my understanding, the Forty-Third Ward, the entire ward is zoned as a residential. My area, which is the Twenty-Fourth Division, is still registered as industrialized area. Yes. So, each time zoning, you know, whenever they had the zoning changes or whatever, it seems as though on purpose that my area was always deleted from being zoned as residential. And for the last, I'm not even going to say how many years, but I embraced the new council that's here. I have tried to encourage the zoning to be changed from residential to...
From industrial to residential.
From industrial to residential.
Thank you. So, so Ms., sorry. So, Ms. Coles, so you know, you and I have talked about this numerous times.
No, we have not. Don't, we're not going to do this.
Yes.
No, we won't. Okay? Let me say this. I hear you. But that's why I'm standing here now, so you can hear me. Okay? Now, first and foremost, we, you do, you are familiar with the zoning problem that we have.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
But every time I try to encourage you to come and, and see what it is that we have problems with, it seems as though we were experiencing avoidance behavior.
No, no, ma'am. No, ma'am. I can tell you that.
We, I'm not going to debate.
I've been in office for, for four months, right? I've been in office for four months, and I have to go through, my, this district goes from Hunting Park down to Rittenhouse Square. It is a huge district that I have to cover, and I have to go to different spaces. But I hear your issue loud and clear. We have already met with the planning commission to talk about your community, to talk about the rezoning of your community. So, it's not something that happens overnight. And I'm very familiar with your neighborhood. I'm in your neighborhood often, right? Very often, just not on a, on a city council tip, but just, you know, I'm a young man from North Philly, right? So, I'm around there, and I see the issues that you're having in your community. And again, as I said, we are coming out to your communities to present a remapping plan to you. We have already presented that to the planning commission. The unfortunate thing is that the planning commission does not work for city council. We work on their schedule, and that's something that we're trying to address. But we have put that request in to re, to look at your community, to rezone it to its proper zoning classification.
Okay, you done?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Now, I still had, well, we did have two minutes. Now, I'm down to like a minute and a half. All right? So, at any rate, if you're in our community, you have been, you have been approached the residents that have been appealing to you since you even started your campaign. So, yes, you may have been in the area, but it seems as though you will not come to the Twenty-Fourth Division.
I was, I was, in your specific division, we have not done a walkthrough of your specific division yet. And I, and I, you know, tell you that we will be up there. Again, when I come to the community, I want to have to come to the community with answers to their solutions, to their problems, right? And so, one answer to this...
I gave you answers right there.
And we're working with the planning commission to go through that rezoning. Again, it's a process. I can't snap my fingers and they produce the bills overnight. That's not how that works. I wish it did work that way, but unfortunately, I got to work on their schedule. To be honest, I'm going to tell you what they told me. We finishing up the white neighborhoods, then we go come to the black neighborhoods. That's what they told me. That's what they told me. That is exactly what they told me.
Excuse me, excuse me.
That is exactly what they told me.
And I hear you. I hear you loud and clear. And what you're saying, I respect that wholeheartedly. But you inherited this.
Mm-hmm. I did, and I'm trying to fix it. And I'm trying to fix it as soon as I can.
Because this has been on the table for over ten to fif, to sixteen years. And that's a long time to fight. Okay? So, in front of you, I also participated... So in front of you, I also, um, participated, and I used the zoning booklet to write down a few things that, because I had submitted this, if you look on the date of it, I had submitted it on, um, November the twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, for, um, for, for, to change the zoning to the Lower Huntington Park request for residential zoning. So do, do you have a copy of that in front of you? Did I give you that?
Um, I believe we have a copy of it. If not, you can send that to me, but it-
I'm not going to go too long, but the council president, that's why I gave it to you as well, because if you can help facilitate this process, I would greatly appreciate it.
Well, I just have to let, I, I, yes, I have to let, let you know, um, how this process work.
I hear you.
Uh, I defer to the council person of the district. If he needs any support on this process, I will assist him, but I will follow his lead on this issue. And I will say, um, in terms of this process, um, give him a chance, right?
Oh, yeah.
And hear me out, sis. I have full confidence that he will follow up with you. If he said he spoke with the planning commission, he did, and then we'll do our due diligence to make sure that your issue is addressed, but we hear you loud and clearly.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much, ma'am.
And, um, congratulations, and we still welcome you. Come on.
Thank you. Our next speaker. Uh, Edward Hanson.
Uh, hey, everybody. Hey, council, how's it going? Um, yeah, since time's short, and people spoke at length about education. I'm an educator, uh, in the Philadelphia School District. I work in Marion Anderson in, uh, South Philly. Um, and, uh, I just wanted to add some caveats, you know? I, I do think that there's an enormous disparity in the, uh, police funding versus the education funding, and as best as I tried to divorce the two when I was researching it, they are pretty much, as studies go, intrinsically linked, uh, because, I'll just read off some stuff. In the, uh, twenty-twenty-two, the National Bureau of Economic Research stated, "While many policies focus on the crime-detering effects of additional policing or tougher criminal justice sanctions, our findings highlight that early investments in children's lives can prevent contact with the adult criminal justice system. Specifically, our results, um, show that improving schools can keep children on a path of increased school engagement and completion, thereby lowering their criminal propensity in adulthood." In their working paper, uh, Public School Funding, School Quality, and Adult Crime. Um, yeah, so there's that. I will also say, in twenty-thirteen, a study released by the Alliance for Excellence in Education titled "Saving Futures, Saving Dollars: The Impact of Education on Crime Reduction and Earnings," estimates that if we could increase our male graduation rate by five percent in P.A. alone, we would save seven hundred thirty-seven million in crime-related costs, as well as earning an additional forty-eight million in taxes, providing a total economic benefit of seven hundred eighty-five million. So if you were to, for example, swap the police budget with the education budget, the education budget would actually end up just paying for itself, uh, is what it would say, uh, which would just save an enormous amount of money. I mean, that was in twenty-thirteen. I'm assuming it's probably like upwards to a billion dollars you would save at this point. So probably just, I don't know, consider swapping those. Um, and then the next one is a twenty, last one, I promise. Twenty-sixteen article published by the Journal of Experimental Criminology under the title "Conclusions from the History of Research into the Effects of Police Size on Crime from nineteen sixty-eight through two thousand thirteen: A Historical Systemic Review." Uh, it states that "Findings vary considerably over time. However, compared to research standards and in comparison to effect sizes calculated by police practices and other meta-analyses, the overall effect size for police force size on crime is negative, small, and not statistically significant." So if we can't swap the budgets, let's just like stop trying to hire twelve hundred new cops, because it just statistically doesn't actually accomplish anything. Um, so, yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Um, yeah, you've also already heard me say all this, so I didn't want to, but I wanted these guys to hear it. All right, so, yeah. Um, so try and justify those expenses to me and everybody else here, and, uh, have a good night.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Dee Dukes.
So good evening, everyone, council president, council members.
Good evening.
I, my list was long, but it's reduced because I have he- heard some of the concerns. So I, uh, sit on a RCO board as a, uh, RCO leader. Uh, I'm honored to have served on the panel for the Education Nominating Committee. I'm satisfied, uh, with the results of all but one. Uh, so my question relates to street tree management budget as it relates to, I know that we have tree planning and there's budgets for that. My street itself, we applied to have maintenance done over ten years ago. All of the departments came out, uh, and ten years later, we have thirty-one trees on our block. We had thirty-six trees the neighbors had to wind up cutting down their own trees. We have not had any maintenance at all. So if you could please add that in the budget for maintenance that involves a tree, tree trimming.
There's five hundred thousand that already been added to this current budget for it. We can do more, but five hundred thousand is added.
How does blocks like mine get it in Winfield? How does blocks like mine get our trees trimmed?
I would encourage you to call your Councilman Curtis Jones, Jr.
Yeah, so ten years, ten years.
Councilman Curtis Jones, Jr.
Ten years, hear me when I tell you, ten years.
And I'm sure he will be supportive of your efforts. And also, we have a program under MPI, well, I forgot, that's Winfield, so y'all have driveways, South Philly, we have alleys, so. I will let you know, we remove, uh, trees out of alleyways, but, um, in terms, and our jokes aside, we will work with Councilman Curtis Jones' office to do official follow-up. So if you could talk to my staff, Wendy, right here, and then we'll take down the information, and then we'll connect you with his office to follow up on the tree.
Awesome, and really quickly, um, as it relates to zoning, I already heard some issues about zoning, but as a leader, more, uh, more transparency, more advocacy for RCOs, more fairness as it relates to district council and selection of coordinating RCOs, reform to the zoning code, legislation in there that protects, um, RCOs. Um, and then last, but certainly not least, I sit on the mastery board, so we represent fourteen thousand plus, um, children in schools. Um, after-school programs, the resource centers in communities, maybe supporting, um, the elementary schools or the middle schools, high schools, driving education. Um, I did hear one of the folks say that they had a tragedy. Well, we also, in my, in, uh, my work area, where I work, I'm a middle school teacher, we had a tragic, uh, one of our teachers was tragically killed, uh, recently by a, uh, young person. So driving lessons in school, after-school programs that support community organizations, not just the Activities Fund. We applied as an organization, I applied a year ago. I put down all of the council districts that we did work in, and we got no funding in the area. So the Activities Grant is not working for every community organization. We need budgets, line item budgets in the budget that specifically support community organizations and after-school programs.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Miss Dukes.
I, I just had one small, but then we gotta get through this list. Uh, in terms of RCOs, though, all of you voted on a city council initiative that will allow us to fund, this is deep, lawyers for RCOs. So when y'all fight big-time developers-
And thank you all for that.
Coming building in the neighborhood.
Yes.
City council will now pay for a lawyer to advocate on your behalf. There's a, there's a, um, the slap law. I know John Christman was about the slap law, as well as Jeffrey Young, where at a time, there was a time when if you advocated against certain developers or any developer, right? Well, the slap laws, them actually suing the RCO, you run out of, you know, and pretty much you can't afford it, and kind of put everybody out of business advocating. And so, um, our former council president, Darrell Clark, led that initiative to empower RCOs-
Yes.
With a legal, repres- with legal representation and so.
Absolutely, and we thank you for that. And as it, as the vice chair of the cross-town, the Philadelphia Cross-Town Coalition, we se- we thank you all, all of the community who voted yes on that. So thank you so much for that. But please talk to Councilman Jones, we need support.
Thank you so much, Miss Dukes. Uh, our next speaker is Karen Deans Hill.
Just the way I feel. Um, just real quick, one, I want to apologize, I wasn't sure how this was set up. It seems like everyone that's up here- Has been, um, has been from some type of organization. I'm from the community here, I brought my grandkids with me. I'm interested in- Thank you, again. Um, again, I'm, a lot of the questions I had has been mentioned, just like the young lady said, my concern was, one, Jefferson Street being tore up the way there. My other one was coming down Twelfth Street is raggy. The, um, tracks, I have problems with SEPTA, always calling them about the tracks that are lifting. The city comes out routinely yearly after snowstorms, and they throw all that asphalt around, but the traffic flow with the buses and that high, um, activity that comes through there, it just ta- tears those holes right back up. When was the street going to ever be, um, resurfaced? I called SEPTA, they tell me, okay, they only responsible for the holes in between the track. I called the city, they tell me they only responsible for the outside. The whole thing is raggy. I've been, I've been in this neighborhood almost twenty-five years now, and they still haven't did any resurfacing.
So I can tell you that, again, as the chair of the Streets and Services Committee on City Council, that that issue is something that is very important to me. Um, and I think that when, once we are developing this relationship with the Streets Department, right? They have been letting us know, um, when their repaving schedule is, and I have been able to have some influence on this type of streets and where they go out to in order to make assessments. I mean, there was a, a bus barn.
They did Thirteen Street like that.
And again, right, it's, with your advocacy, folks like you, we can make sure that Twelfth Street and Jefferson get done as well. And so I want to make sure that now that I'm hearing this, but, right, I'm going to take this, this is what this process is for. We're going to take this back to the Streets Department. I can tell you that the mayor, um, in her Safe, Clean, and Green initiatives, um, streets is, is a huge part of that, because she wants to make sure that, someone mentioned earlier that we don't see the things that our money is going to. We're going to make sure that you see what your tax dollars are going to.
Well, another thing that's wrong with the streets, the, um, landmarking, you know, the, the, um, marking for the bike lane was originally there twenty years ago. It doesn't disappear. The X in the box where there's certain areas and corners that people can park at. I always have a lot of trouble with, um, parking that's either on the street, signs say no parking this way, people still park, I call nine-one-one all the time. Um, there are people parking on top of the concrete. So you have cars on top of the concrete, cars on the street, and the X in the box, cars parked in front of, um, the stop sign. So when you come down a certain street, you go to look so that you don't run into anything coming down Twelfth Street, and you can't even get a good, safe view. So I complain about that all the time as well, because every Sunday darn near, I'm always calling the police department about cars just being parked. I give description, I give this, the color, the size, and, you know, whatever other information I can give them. It's just an issue, and it's been ongoing for years.
So what I can tell you is that we'll make sure that the Parking Authority steps up enforcement in this community. Um, that's something that, that the PPA executive director has assured us, uh, wherever we would like to see, uh, stepped up enforcement, um, that he will make sure that it happens. And so we'll add this to the, to their list, this community, to make sure that Parking Authority is out here enforcing our, our parking laws.
Okay, well, that was one of my biggest concerns, because I got grandkids, like I said, and I want them to be safe.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Um, our next speaker is, um, Wasina.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Wasina Williams. I'm the first vice chair of the Fourteenth Ward. I am the president of Richard Island Homes, resident council. I am a, I am a block captain, and I care about my community. I am also on the board of East Poplar Playground as the president. So I'm seeing all this to say is, I'm very involved in my community, because it don't only take y'all, it take all of us. The reason why I'm up here is because, yes, I do live in P.H.A. I've been born and raised in P.H.A., family members. Um, dispatching, when we call the cops to come to do anything with P.H.A., it's not dispatch to the city. So we have to call P.H.A. cops, and then we have to call the city. So if we can get them to combine together, when it's a problem where they all on one scream, then I think it'd be a little more better down here. So I am asking, when you going over your bill or your budget or whatever, how you're doing, the radio room is not dispatch to the, to the city where it's, it's a crime in Philadelphia Housing Authority, not just Richard Island, Philadelphia Housing Authority. So I would ask if you can look on that or see how that can be, you know, entwined in? Um, thank you, that's my two minutes.
Yeah, so to answer that, thank you for that. Your, your calls are actually going to the Philadelphia Police, and they're diverting it to P.H.A. But one thing that has happened in this community that, um, you know, we'll be coming back out to discuss, um, in, in, in the future, is that the merger of the Sixth and the Ninth Districts. Um, and they're doing that so they can have more manpower to focus on those issues as well.
Right, but what's happening, Jeffrey, is like if I dial, if, if it's a shooting, and I dial Philadelphia Housing Authority, it's not going, like they have to dish back, you know what I'm saying?
You shouldn't dial the Housing Authority, you should dial nine-one-one.
Right, we should dial nine-one-one, but they don't pick up. So the next thing we do is call Philadelphia Housing Authority. So if they're not picking up, what are we supposed to do? So that's what I'm saying, but it should be one system. Even if I just call, you know, nine-one-one, it should dispatch to Philadelphia Housing Authority. A, because they know what's going on on their site, so they can go directly to the problem. So we're, it's like we're asked, I mean, excuse me, we, we A-out, so.
Yeah, I would encourage you to call nine-one-one first and keep calling nine-one-one, because that system-
I'm gonna be dead.
Their systems are not integrated.
I'm gonna be dead. They do not, and then when they answer, they tell you, what's your problem? They don't get no ambulance, no nothing out to you. They don't. They put you on hold, and then they transfer you. I'm telling you. Or they don't answer, period.
No, thank you for that, yeah, I'm definitely going to look into that, thank you for that, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Our, our next speaker is Joy. George, I'm sorry, that's a J, I'm sorry, George.
My name is George, all power to the people, uh, free black workers, free Palestine, free Congo, free Sudan. Um, like you said, you just got here, so I'm gonna give you grace, you know? It's good to bring up ideas, it's good to bring up the talk, but I need like material, physical changes, you know? And it's extremely disappointing, again, that the, I can, I'm fine. It's extremely dif- it's extremely disappointing that we, um, are, again, in this cycle of pouring our, most of our resources into policing, adding more money into policing. Policing doesn't stop the influence of drugs into community, doesn't stop gun violence, doesn't feed the children. Policing only just disturbs us, it only just creates chaos. Alexander Spencer was killed recently. I hope you guys will be fighting for justice for him. But my question really is, what is your commitment to the people, specifically the black community? You know, I'm very grateful for everyone just sharing this space and bringing up their experiences, but these are the people that you really need, and obviously everybody, but I don't want to hear what Cheryl Parker's ideas are, I don't want to hear what you guys are, I need you guys to hear what our ideas are, because we are the source to the reality that we want to live in. All this money that goes to, again, policing, doesn't help make our communities a better place. I'm not saying we don't need some type of safety, we one thousand percent need some type of safety, but education's more important, housing's more important, access to clean, fresh food is way more important than any police structure. Um, and that's my question. What is your commitment to the people?
I mean, I wouldn't have ran for office if I wasn't committed to the people, right? Um, I can tell you that, you know, you may not know me personally, um, but I didn't have to run for office, right? I chose to do this because I'm committed to representing my community. I grew, I was raised in North Philadelphia, right? I got a nice-looking suit on now, but I'm from Johnson Homes, right? I still live across the street from Johnson Homes.
And you're a lawyer.
Right, and I'm an attorney. I was a partner at a law firm before I ran for office, I could have stayed there, right? I could have stayed there, but I chose to come back to help my community, because I see the issues my community go through every day. There needs to be an advocate who understands the issues, who's lived through the issues, and can provide solutions to those issues.
So you, obviously, and not discredit, thank you for sharing your experience. So you understand, historically, we've always been consistently pouring the most money that we taxpayers, for our hard labor, going to policing. But what's the material reality?
I think, I think, bro, what you're getting at.
Oh, well, I just want to finish my, uh, this one point, uh, I'm sorry.
Law is yours, bro.
No, you're good, you're good, you're good, you're good. Yeah, but again, I just want people to understand that we live in a structure that is profit over the people. Policing is not going to be our solution.
You live in capitalism, unfortunately.
And it's great you brought it up. Are you an anti-capitalist? Because black people never thrive under capitalism. I mean, someone pointed to me in the time, black people came here under capitalism as slaves, and are still being treated as less. So if you consider yourself conscious, if you consider yourself someone for the people, I please hope to God that you actually take what people are saying, because these experiences are real. The inconvenience of being a human being in Philadelphia is real. So please, like I said, take these experiences and really put that into your, uh, however you navigate trying to restructure this budget.
Yeah, I, I can tell you that I, I've taken notes on every single person who has testified up here, um, because I'm going to make sure that I review these notes as we're going into our budget negotiations to see what we can do, um, about providing the assistance that the community has asked for.
Like I said, ideas are great, material realities are even better, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you so much. Our next, uh, speaker is Arletha Pickens.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, this speaker.
Councilpeople, my neighbors. Um, my original question was already addressed, and that was about the public schools and how so many of them are closed for asbestos and whatnot, so that was already addressed. I do have one other issue, and that is 311. When you call 311 and you give your complaint or your concern, I've done it, I've put in complaints and never got any response, or nev- no, you know, completion of the, the, the problem. We've had a hole in our block for over a year, where the city came and dug up the street and never filled in the hole. Um, one of the neighbors had a problem with their water, and he had to replace some pipes. He did that, and the city was supposed to come and fill the hole outside in the street up once he completed his part. It's still a hole there.
So, Ms. Pickens, if you can give your information, this is the first time, I've, you know, seen you numerous times. If you give your information to Jawad, can you raise your hand, Jawad? So we can then send that to the Streets Department, um, to make sure they come out there to, to fill that hole. Um, if anyone that's in this room is having issues with 311, please call my office. So we will follow up with them directly, we will follow up with the Service Department directly to make sure your issue gets addressed. Because we understand the issues that 311 have, we know that when you call 311, and then your neighbor called 311 for the same issue, they close your ticket out and keep their ticket open. That's the issue, that's a problem. So call our office to make sure we follow up directly with the Service Department to make sure your issue gets addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I, I hope you guys will be able to do something about all the schools that are closed for the asbestos, and our kids need to stay in their neighborhood.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Next speaker is Selena Gross. She left. All right, um, Gail Loney.
It's good. Hello, uh, my name is Gail Loney. I am a lifelong resident of the 5th Council medic district. I am a black, a block, I am a black block captain. Yes, I am, and I am a very black block captain in my community. Um, I am here to bring up, once again, a proposed public safety complex in north central Philadelphia. The problem I have and the question that I'm asking about it is, how does a city put a public safety complex in a neighborhood with minimal community engagement? I am also asking for feedback on information I have put in writing and requested and have followed up with, with the councilman's office. I'm still waiting for my feedback on environmental studies, on traffic studies. I have put in a right-to-know request for all the information around the zoning, around the Art Commission, around the Historical Commission. I live two blocks away from the proposed facility. As a block captain and as an engaged community member, I was not contacted about meetings. In addition, this has been going on since at least 2018, where my community received a award for fighting this complex due to lack of community engagement. Now, the complex, I am being told, has been approved because one RCO and a small group of people in a community that ranges from all the way over here, 10th and Poplar, to 33rd Street, to Lehigh Avenue, which this public safety facility is supposed to cover. Um, I don't know if you got a meeting, but I know I was not invited to a meeting. I am a block captain, I am engaged. I belong to all kinds of organizations in this city, and I knew and know a lot of people in this room. I am very disappointed that my requests were not followed up, and I have been very patient. Um, I am not letting this go, because one of the issues about this is, why is my neighborhood constantly having things put in it without the community's input? Without the community saying, we need this or that or the other. My community, where I live, I have 500 and $600,000 apartment buildings all around my neighborhood. My property value has not gone up, but incrementally. But I know that this facility is not going to bring tax dollars into my neighborhood. I know that my neighborhood is covered with empty lots, and I'm sick of looking at them, but a public safety facility that is really the new 22nd District Police Station, okay, is not ideal when housing, and I'm not just talking about any housing, I'm talking about housing for people who still live there. Housing for people who want to live there, because my neighborhood is convenient to public transportation, okay? We need apartment buildings, but we also need new, single-family starter homes for young families, for young people. We need housing for young people who are coming out of, uh, you know, foster care, who have nowhere to live. We have children between 18 and 24 who are living in the street and homeless, and I can't take it anymore. I lived in that neighborhood, I grew up in that neighborhood, it's a great neighborhood, this is a great neighborhood. I commuted from this neighborhood to New York City. I know the transportation is part of it. I've worked, I may not look like what people think North Philly look like, okay? Because you want to tell us what our community is, you can't. We are diverse, and everybody has different opinions and ideas. And I know that I might not want it, but somebody else might. But if you don't have the community engagement, you won't know who wants it and why. You need to know why.
Ms. Loney, at every meeting that I've been invited to about that issue, I've been there, right? I've talked to people about that issue. You've asked for certain studies, and we've put those requests in. I don't do the studies, right? I don't go out there and dig up the dirt and do it myself. We got to put that request in to the Capitals Project Office that the mayor just revamped, right? And they got to get back to us when, when, when they do, but we're following up, we're staying dis- uh, dis- diligent on that issue, diligent on that issue, rather, excuse me. And we're making sure that you're going to get the things that you need, because I want to see that stuff, right? I want to see how that's going to impact my community. I don't live too far from there, right? So I want to make sure that if this gets built, it's done sustainably, um, and it's not going to have any neg- long-term negative impacts on our community, so I'm with you on that. Um, as far as your right-to-know request goes, we can follow up with the City Council's right-to-know officer to see where that request is. I don't know who else you put the request in, but again, my job is to follow up with, for you, to make sure you get the information that you're looking for.
So this is my concern. I, I know that the city has the right-to-know request, I got the email to say it's been received. However, I would appreciate contact. I saw you yesterday at City Council. I am a phone call, a text message, a email away. I'm a block captain. There is so much information that you guys hold on to that the blocks don't get. That needs to be resolved, recollected, do whatever it is y'all need to do, because the people in these communities need to know what's happening in their communities and around the city.
So everyone signed in today, you'll be on our list for when we have events, when we do things, you'll know what's going on, right?
Well, you see our show up.
That's why we collecting this data, right? Because I'm, I've just been in office for not even four months yet. I went into office with nothing, no information, no contact, no nothing. We are brand new at this, right? And so we are addressing the issues as they are coming up. Um, and I think that, again, we represent 170,000 people.
Ding 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 ding, that's why this needs to be all over the city.
And that's why we're doing it, okay?
All right, thank you, ma'am.
The police station as well, that needs to be all over the city.
Our, our next speaker, thank you, Ms. Loney, I appreciate that. Our next speaker is Charlotte Tatum.
And then Erin Holiday, make your way up. Somebody named Amro, and Elle Macy.
Good evening. Um, I'm real quick. Hi, um, I just wanted to, I just had, I had a couple of concerns, but I'm just going to shorten the time. Uh, my, my main concern, I'm from, uh, the district, I'm sorry, Ward 43, District 1, um, Division 1, I'm sorry. And, uh, mainly my, our concern for the community is the speeding in our area. Um, there is a main concern with speeding, where we have a lot of cars that are just making their own ways down Oyog Road. Um, we have no lines. So we're asking, I'm asking, in the budget, is there lines that can be put down, white and yellow, uh, that we can put into place in the budget? Um, also, um, there's a concern, uh, it was a young lady, a young little girl, nine years old, that was hit, uh, March 9th. It was a hit-and-run. Thank God she wasn't killed or anything like, there was no fatality, but the gentleman left, and it's because of the speeding. I want to know if in the budget, there's, um, monies there, or ti- a timeline or list where we can get, uh, the white lines, yellow lines, and also possibly speed cushions that can be put in place in that area.
Ab- absolutely, we're looking into that issue. Um, re- restriping our streets is something that's important to me, um, I don't know if you're familiar with the bus barn at 33rd and Dolphin, they didn't have lines for years. Um, and we just got those lines put in there, um, thanks to some advocacy from the community. So we're going to make sure that I reach out to the Streets Department, if you can tell me the 100 block of Oyog Road.
The 4100.
4100 block of Oyog Road, and we'll reach out, um, to make sure that that gets restripped and talk, and start the process of implementing some traffic, um, calming, uh, devices on Oyog Road.
Okay, thank you, and the 3900 as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Erin Holiday. Erin Holiday. Somebody named Amro, A.M.R.O. And Elle Macy.
Salaam alaikum, peace of all of you. I am as Muslim and Arabic people, I need to come today to return thankness to Mr. Jeffrey. Uh, we have a festival this week, uh, belonging to our religion. Uh, we are happy he will coming and respecting us and coming to our, uh, community. Uh, so it's a kind of the respect for religion. Uh, so belonging to me and belonging to most of the Arabic people and, uh, mo- most of the Muslim people in Philadelphia, help me to say thankness to him. We need to find the really council, uh, the member council who working hard and caring for every part in the community and in the place of the city. So, uh, most thankness for what you did, and we hope to have more caring for, uh, Arabic and Muslim people in Philadelphia. Thank you, sir. This is a first, uh, idea. Uh, today, so I come today to say the truth about, about, uh, about that. Uh, also, I follow, uh, your Facebook. Uh, some people say you, they not see on streets what you do, what you make. Uh, anybody, he can go to your website, and he can look to your page and see what you're doing. Every day, at least one event, I follow. Today, in one day, I follow you, I are 2th Street, going 5th Street, going Cecil B. Moore Avenue, everywhere in Philadelphia. So you open your hand to everybody who can, uh, need the really community. So thankness for what you did. We really need who, uh, the people who is active and who, who have the idea and really wanted to support our community to find the great Philadelphia. Uh, for today, we listen for one word many times, people repeat, repeat, repeat. This means, this is the main problem, we need to catch this problem by our hand. Uh, what is the problem? Most of people talking about housing, housing, housing. I am the people who coming to this city, uh, uh, I, I, I not have a social, I not have a credit to score, I not have income, so after I coming, I cannot get the housing, nobody can supporting me. So it's the, the problem of housing, not for only the new people. It's belonging, today I listening to citizen people who have the same problem for the housing also. So this problem of housing is for, uh, new people coming to Philadelphia and also to be, for the citizen. Housing problem is very easy can solve for one minute, I can give you the solution. Now you say the housing is equal to 108,000 for one small housing. Uh, now the new way of doing the business, I do business in China 20 years for international training business through the, uh, different kind of government. Now, uh, no need to make construction, no need to make a building, no need to, after you have a fire, you need to make a fire down. It's a lot of troubles. The easy way I find, uh, and I study, have auction, some auction is happen. This kind of auction belonging to sheriff office and belonging to tax office. I, I just take one minute, no more. Uh, belonging to sheriff office and tax office. Uh, almost, uh, cost, it's 1,000, 2,000, 5,000, you can get the land. Now have kind, uh, we call it, it's look like mobile house, it's a capsule home. If you using this capsule home, fully furnished, everything inside, it's a cost how much in China? It's a cost of almost 25,000 to 30,000. So you can have your own home, fully furnished, total 30,000. So better than you have a building for one house, for the same budget, you can have more than 10 house. So you can solve the problem for homeless people. But this, why is this people homeless? Because they find, they cannot find the hope, they lose their hope. Now, if you give them the housing and ask him, he need to pay every month for three years, every, every month he pay per day 30 dollar, so he will be happy.
You have a proposal, sir?
I have proposal, I, 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 I have a proposal, not only this, I have a lot of idea to making and to see the nice Philadelphia for trash problem. I have also our strategy and for transportation.
Thank you, I recommend you have a conversation with him.
I am ready, I am ready.
So you can meet with him, and we're going to call up our next person, okay? Thank you. We got you.
We gonna talk.
We, we got you, go to one minute, we try, go ahead, real quick. We got one more person.
We need to know what about, what, what about Eagles? What your idea to supporting Eagle Fly, Eagle Fly? What is idea to support Eagle Team? Is the most important to some people.
Okay.
That's all.
What's idea to support the Eagles team?
Yes.
The Philadelphia Eagles?
Yes, Philadelphia Eagles, Eagles Fly, Eagles Flies. It's the most efficient. I have, I have today green color, I have green color to support Eagle.
Absolutely, we support.
I love Eagle.
That's in my district, I support him.
Eagles Fly, Eagles Fly.
Fly Eagles Fly, my man, thank you, I like you.
Thank you, have a nice day.
You too, Salaam alaikum. Ms. Elle Macy. Mr. Elle Macy.
Lawrence Macy, born and raised in North Philadelphia from 25th and Diamond Raymond Rosen Projects. I'm gonna talk real fast and get out of here, because I know you guys are tired. My company is Macy's Enterprises LLC. As far as City Council is concerned, if you want to verify what was handed to you, you can talk to, uh, Andrew Goodman, Jesse Lawrence, uh, Darren Boway, he's my personal attorney for the real estate, et cetera, et cetera. Everybody knows about me. To make a long story short, I just came to make two quick points. One, as you said, you're here to serve us, I came to serve notice that we have to help you serve us. For the people, I came to tell the people that help is on the way. I'm a developer, I'm going to be a new developer in the city. Half of everything I touch, and they had a, a proposal there, that should be, uh, read at the next Land Bank meeting as a proposal. I've been tweaking some things, it's very complicated. But to make a long story short, 30 properties per district, half of everything that I touch gets liquidated and sold back into. gets liquidated and sewn back into the district forever. Make the district landlords. We have developers coming into our town, getting properties for a dollar, getting HUD funding to build the properties that worth a million and then they tell you they can't give them to them for two hundred thousand. It's a hundred percent profit. Ridiculous. Anyway, before I get all hyped up, but the, the long and short of it is, is that I'm a developer and I'm trying to start a new trend within the city, maybe current developers. Of course, everybody's gonna give up half, but maybe it'll let city council and the powers that be say, hey, we got people here doing this. You gotta do a little something. And there's another thing that'll allow us to start back training the citizens again. I've already talked with the international unions, get some of the young brothers and sisters, get them trained and work on those properties.
You have a proposal, bruh?
It's already in.
Can you give it to them so he can see?
He has it.
As a district council person?
Yep, he has it. I'mma, I'mma say this and I'mma, and I, and I'mma wind it down. One other thing, with the RFPs, we know they're very large. It's a lot of money involved. Some of you aren't gonna like this, but I have to say, with those large RFPs, hundreds of millions of dollars monthly come in and ransom set off those. We should, I would like to do some of those RFPs and indirectly, we have the, uh, scattered sites that half of go directly to the people. And we have the RFPs where we take half of that and directly to the people and drop that money in the middle of city hall for our first responders and our infrastructure. Everybody wants to cry, uh, defund the police. No. We need to overfund the police. One of the reasons why we had a problem, we had because they're poorly paid and therefore they're not doing their jobs to the fullest of their ability. If we could pay them more and cause them to have to train more, now we could say self-defense is part of the training. So you're not quick to the gun. Now we can say some of the ones that aren't able, disabled, or simply fat and out of shape, y'all go in the office, I'm tired of coming to the window and seeing these buff guys at the police window and we have them. I, I don't mean to be offensive, but what are you gonna do for your partner? How fast can you get around the corner? How apt are you to chase someone? It's just the facts of the matter. And it's no shade on people, but it's us. We're telling our kids and some of the kids that pick this up and kid this, that they don't want to be police. We don't want people not looking like us policing us. We don't want to police us. Who's gonna police us?
I got you, bruh. Thank you. So, appreciate you. I do just want to clarify for the record before we leave, right? Them days of a dollar, dollar properties, that's not true no more. So I know people think that. Ain't no developers coming, listen, bruh. Ain't no developers coming down city hall getting properties for a dollar. Now, if you're a developer under our NPI program and you're building affordable and workforce housing, housing that has a criteria, an income limit, criteria, we will work with the developer to build that home that's affordable and workforce. And as a part of them building the workforce and affordable housing, they can get property from the city, but you can't sell that property for a million dollars or two million dollars. So I just want to separate fact from fiction. There was a time when you can get a property for a dollar.
Absolutely.
But that was, th- them days, them days been over. And the reason why they switched it up, to be honest with you, because the value of the properties in certain neighborhoods started to go up so high, they said, nah, we can't get either way for a dollar no more. We're gonna start charging folks up, but.
Only, only reason I brought up the dollar piece is because with the developers getting it for, and I'm a developer, we know might as well be a dollar. So with that value, we can sew back in the community. Half of that money could be coming back to the community.
But I think, listen, we're gonna wrap up. I'm gonna let the host, um, you know, take us out. I just want to say thank you, everyone, uh, for coming out. And I think this meeting is great because at the end of the day, um, again, that energy, right, is passion and commitment to change your neighborhood. To be here at the nine o'clock on a Thursday, right? And we started council at ten.
On the dot.
And so when some folks say, well, is you out here for the sake of just being out here? I got a nine-year-old and a seven-year-old. I'm gonna zoom home so I can tuck in. So I'm definitely not out here for the sake of, and none of us are up for election. I want to say that for the record. We are not out here trying to get any votes. We got like four more years. We out here because we care and we really want to make sure we take your issues and concerns in consideration when we go forth and do this next budget process. So to the young Jeffrey, young Esquire Councilman from the Fifth Council medic district, the host.
I, I just want to thank you all for, for coming out here tonight. As I mentioned earlier, um, just the level of participation in this meeting just shows me that you care about your community just as much as I care about the community, right? And so as long as we keep that same energy going forward, um, we're gonna make some changes in our district. We're gonna make some changes in our city. Uh, so I just want to again, thank you all for, for coming out, um, because I gotta zoom home to my six-year-old. So I appreciate y'all.